Welcome, everybody, to this Region 12 Board of Education.
Sorry. Okay. Welcome to the Region 12 Board of Education Special Meeting, which is a budget workshop for the Board of Ed. All right, so, starting with attendance, Rebecca, I'm sorry, would you take attendance? Yeah, make sure that you have to press, the green light has to be on.
Anthony Amato.
Here.
Valerie Anderson.
Valerie Amato.
Alan Brown.
Here.
Gregory Kava.
Amy, welcome.
I'm here. Michelle Gora. Emily Hibbard. James Hirschfield.
Here.
Jennifer Pody.
Here.
Michael Sinatra.
Here.
Just walking in. Peter Tagley.
Here.
Sidney Warble.
Here.
All right, thank you. So, right now, we're missing Valerie, Greg, Michelle, and Emily. All right, item two, Administrative Presentation on Superintendent's Budget. Dr. Cosentino?
Yes, as you all know, last week, I did present my budget. And tonight, I just asked the administrative team to give some clarifying information that I think will be helpful to the Board, so that you understand some of the different pieces. So, I'm going to ask Mrs. DeBrito, is she here? I can't see her, to come on up. Oh, there she is, Mrs. DeBrito, here she comes. Okay. And she'll start, and a couple of other administrators will also present. And I think that'll just give a little clear information about some of the things that were in my budget that have been questioned.
I apologize, time got away from me. My name is Teresa DeBrito, and I'm the Curriculum Director here in the district. And the purpose for this evening is to discuss certain aspects of the superintendent's budget. We want to provide clarity, and we want to provide some new additional information. And none of what we are going to share affects the bottom line of the proposed budget. I would like to start by sharing that the budget process starts many, many months before the superintendent actually presents the budget to the Board of Education. We start this back in November. It's a collaborative process. The superintendent meets with administrators, with staff, with the community, and starts to weigh the needs and the requests that are put in front of her. She also looks at enrollment projections every year. Once she presents the budget to the Board of Education, it then becomes public. And it would not be appropriate for anyone other than the superintendent to present her budget and talk about specific information before it becomes public. On March 7th, Dr. Cosentino presented her 2016-17 budget, school year budget. Since there, since then, there have been additional meetings with administrators and staff, and adjustments have been made, which I am going to share at this time. In regard to Spanish, we are now going to offer Spanish to all K-5 classrooms in the district. We are reducing the number of minutes for instructional time, however, we are increasing all grades, as opposed to only having some of the grades have Spanish, all K-5 classrooms will continue to have Spanish. In regard to the multi-grade 2-3 class at Burnham, the reason that that was proposed was really specific to the social-emotional well-being of students due to class size being so small. Dr. Cosentino met with stakeholders to discuss this concern. She began discussions with administrators. She also met with selectmen from Bridgewater and Burnham's PTO president. She also spoke with a teacher directly involved. You will shortly hear more details about the structure of the 2-3 class. In an attempt to address class size, a letter was mailed home today to all of the incoming families of students in next year's grade K through 5, as a reminder that we do have a flexible in-district enrollment option, where a family can ask if they can take their child to another school that's not in their hometown, as long as they can provide transportation. So, we did send out a letter just reminding families of that particular option. In regard to curriculum, this will be a multi-grade classroom. We're not compromising curriculum. Grade-level teachers have collaborated throughout the school year and will continue in the summer to finalize units. Having said that, looking ahead, Dr. Cosentino has invited the principals, myself, teachers, and additional guests to attend a multi-age presentation provided by Dr. Stone next month. We are exploring the multi-age classroom, and Burnham could possibly be a lighthouse for this shift in the future. We are committed to sustaining our classification for our schools as schools of distinction. And we appreciate your support, we appreciate your input. And at this time, Ms. Colletta is going to actually talk about the specifics of the structure of the grade 2-3 class.
Good evening, I'm Kathy Colletta, the principal of Booth Free and Burnham Schools. So, I'm going to talk tonight about the structure. My staff and I put together a proposed schedule. It's a sample schedule, but I'm going to talk about the configuration. So, as you all know, we have been doing a K-1 class at Burnham School, and it is a multi-grade, not multi-age, meaning that we do teach the curriculum of both grades. And that configuration has been working quite well. We have a classroom teacher and a highly qualified tutor that's in there that is a retired teacher. Everyone knows Mrs. Sagerson, she's wonderful. So, that, that really works well. So, this coming year, we're going to combine the second grade and third grade. So, all morning long, between 9:00 and 12:15, two teachers, two certified teachers, will be working together. So, the children will come together in the morning, but most of the subject, the subject areas, mathematics and language arts, will be taught in the morning. So, you can look at the schedule, that's up in front of you. We will do, we'll begin with Number Corner, which is part of our math program. We will do our word study, we will do mathematics, and all of those things will be mostly separated by their grade levels. So, they'll get the second grade as well as the third grade curriculum, just like we do in our K-1 programming. In the afternoon, one of the teachers will go to Booth Free School and become the math interventionist. So, in the afternoon, the teacher that's left with both groups will be working on things like writing. We also have Second Step, which is our program, talking about relationships, that kind of thing. That'll be taught by two people. And just know that I'm going to shift one of my other staff members, one of my paraprofessionals, to come in later, so that that person can be in the classroom, so there'll still be two adults. But if you notice, that most of our specials are in the afternoon also. And that allows for students to be together as a larger group, and they'll go to most of the specials. I have included two specials in the morning, because I also want those two certified teachers to have time to plan. But most of the other specials are in the afternoon. So, again, we'll touch upon science and social studies in the afternoon. I'm going to talk about science in a second, as well as writing, as well as Second Step, which can be assisted by our school psychologist, and I'll be shifting her time slightly or moving that particular subject area up. Presently, in the K-1 class, our Second Step program, there's one, there's a kindergarten program and a first-grade program. So, the classroom teacher teaches one, and our school psychologist teaches the other. The same format will happen with the 2-3 class. Science, in particular, will also be taught in a separate way. We will be using the proposed new enrichment or STEM teacher to come in and teach one section of science three days a week, and the classroom teacher can teach the other. Social studies can be embedded in terms of our language arts program, and we'll be looking at that. You know, I'm pleased to say that this coming year, we'll be able to take a look at curriculum and see where, in fact, we can begin to blend that curriculum if, in fact, the Board wishes for us to move by, move into multi-age. Okay? At this time, Emily Judd is going to come up and talk to you a little bit about the enrichment STEM teacher.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Emily Judd, the principal at Washington Primary School. And as you know, the superintendent's budget includes an addition of a full-time enrichment teacher. The position will be multifaceted, to include STEM learning experiences for pre-K through 5 students, and academic enrichment for students identified as gifted in grades 3 through 8. So, why consider STEM enrichment in the elementary schools? STEM is the integration, let me just get to my slide, of science, technology, engineering, and math, and real-world setting, and with real-life problems. We know that for our country to be globally competitive, the education system must prepare students who are career and college-ready to take on the challenges of the real world. We also know that jobs that are most demand at the time, at this time, are STEM-related careers, while other careers require the knowledge and critical thinking skills to solve the real-life problems. So, such skills as asking questions, defining problems, developing and using models, planning and carrying out investigations, analyzing, interpreting data, using mathematics and computational thinking, constructing explanations, and designing solutions, creating arguments and justifications, are all of those transferable skills that are needed and are all enhanced through STEM-related activities. So, STEM programs in our school support the demand for jobs, cultivate knowledge and understanding, and creative and critical thinking skills. Additionally, this is a very important point, we know that K-12 students explore their interests and begin to develop their personal identity as competent learners in the areas that they are most encouraged. We see that as early as the middle school. Therefore, providing motivating and interesting STEM learning activities at younger ages cultivates the sense of competence with STEM content and skills, which may directly impact a student's career goals and future contributions to our communities. For us, this position will also serve to motivate and ignite excitement for the Ag STEM program that will be available to them at Chapag. The position of the enrichment teacher will directly serve students by implementing hands-on activities and inquiry-based lessons that enrich the curriculum and cross over STEM contents. The enrichment teacher will also serve as a co-teacher and resource to refine the teaching of science through demonstrating and coaching of interdisciplinary and hands-on inquiry-based teaching practices. This will support the necessary work needed to implement the next generation of science Aside from the STEM focus, the enrichment teacher will work with students in three, in grades 3 through 8, who are identified as academically gifted. Region 12 currently identifies academically gifted students through a specific process. The enrichment teacher will review and revise the eligibility process to incorporate a variety of resources, such as standardized measures, portfolio review, and teacher checklists. In Region 12, teachers readily differentiate instruction to meet the needs of diverse learners. However, in our schools, there exists a small group of students that may require greater curricular adjustments to extend special interests and talents. This enrichment teacher would develop learning opportunities that would support the unique needs of this group of students, promote self-directed behaviors, and advance problem-solving skills. As we spoke about the STEM component, this teacher would also serve as a resource and coach to enhance enrichment opportunities for all the students in the regular education setting. So, overall, the enrichment teacher's role is to directly impact student learning. Additionally, this position will offer an attractive program to prospective families interested in Region 12. So, that's the enrichment teacher, and I think the next piece is going to Mrs. Gallo, Principal of Chapag.
Do you need that?
Apparently, I do.
Okay. Want me to help you?
No, thank you. Hi, I'm Kim Gallo from Chapag, and my purpose tonight is to clarify some of the information that was presented about the teacher work area. Facts about the area itself, it's a large area, 8,025 square feet, and it includes office spaces, the copy center, there's a couple of, obviously, restrooms in there. And then, there are areas, the copy center is a larger area, and there are areas for each department, as well as a small area where teachers eat. The professional use that happens on a daily basis is that, is the collaborative effort that happens in a unique school like Chapag. The Chapag experience is where kids and teachers collaborate, meet together. Our high school teachers especially all share classrooms. They don't have their own classroom. So, this is the space that they come back to, to meet with students, to meet with other teachers. We have something called professional learning communities that happen on a daily basis. Teachers are meeting in their areas, as well as meeting with parents, or meeting with visitors from outside of the school. It truly is an area of collaboration, and a large one. The question about remodeling is not mine to answer. It's part of a larger plan from Dr. Cosentino, and it started with the mall and many other projects. And the goal is to remodel areas of our schools as part of the regular budget. And this is what we're, this is what we're doing. As part of the school budget, we're adding these expenses in. Why would we do that? Well, the countertops are original. I tell the students all the time, they were constructed when I was in high school, and I'm really old. So, the need to update becomes kind of obvious. The copy center includes something called embedded electrical feeds. I'm not an expert on that. Mr. O'Leary knows far more about it than I do. However, it's something that needs to come out. It needs updating and improvement and repair. The enclosures that were, are planned for the bathrooms are new materials that will help with the cleanliness of the area. And this is one of the areas that we, I think we almost hurt ourselves, because our custodians do such a wonderful job, we don't realize that they're doing a wonderful job with materials that are very outdated and harder to clean. So, there will be some efficiency in this as well. Our bookshelves are dying under the weight of many, many books. They're old, like me, and they're sagging. I won't go there. The cabinets are stuffed after many years of teachers, and they're exceeding the weight rating. They need replacement, they need updating. And the lighting, too, is outdated and in need of repair. These are the cost estimates. I'm not going to read them to you, because I know you're all very aware, and very aware of what we're doing. But in the interest of transparency, it's a breakdown of the different areas that are intended for repair, and how much they each, each cost. This will be made available to you. I'm sure it will also be on the website. You can take it apart, take a look at it, and regardless of your own personal opinion on it, you'll have the right information. It's far more than a café. So, I wanted to make sure that you understood that, and I will turn it over to Dr. Cosentino to finish.
I just want to thank you to the administrators. I appreciate that clarifying information. Hope you're... I'll start again. Thank you to the administrators. I think that was some good clarifying information. To the board members, I did just send you the PowerPoint to the public. I will put on our website tomorrow. We are very comfortable with the budget that we've presented, and that it meets the needs of our children and our schools in an efficient and effective way, but carries out our mission to be just the best schools that we can be. We're happy, the team is happy, to move in any direction that the Board would like us to, knowing that we always do what's best for our children. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll pass it back to you.
All right, thank, thank you. I'm just, I'll just say to the Board, as a general matter, our next item is public comment on agenda items. When we're finished with that, I've asked Michelle Gora to just take the Board through the budget. That's normally something our treasurer, I asked Valerie Anderson, to do. She's not present tonight. Michelle has been involved in the construction of the budget, has attended a lot of the meetings, so I've asked Michelle, with some assistance from Anthony, perhaps, since he's also been involved, to take the Board through the budget. Then, it's up to the Board to, on the agenda, is to consider and, if appropriate, adopt a budget. I just want to say, it doesn't have to happen tonight. The Board doesn't have to adapt the budget tonight. It could just listen to everything and adjourn. We have another meeting, I believe, next week, a regular Board meeting. I believe the budget will be on the agenda for consideration by the Board, and the Board, I think, should adopt a budget certainly by next week. Then, on April 4th, is the district budget hearing, which is in the auditorium, which starts at 7:00. For the public to be heard, questions to be answered to the best of our ability. And after the district budget hearing, the Board adjourns back to a regular meeting immediately after that, at which time, the Board will adopt a budget, after having heard from the public. But what I'm trying to get at is that it doesn't, we don't necessarily have to adopt a budget tonight, although we can. That's, that's up to the Board, if there's any motions to do that. All right, so with, Peter.
My past experience, having sat at many budget meetings, budget talks can go on for two or three hours sometimes. And I wonder if Board members would prefer to have a timeframe excluding when the public speak to us from that time, how long we want to sit here, when we can have another meeting and discuss and finalize the budget. So, I'd like to get everybody's opinion, if they want to speak about that. But I certainly have been through meetings that went for two and three and four hours in the past, many years ago. From my vantage point, I'd certainly like to avoid that.
All right. Why don't we just see how tonight goes, and if it starts getting late, I'm sure there'll be other Board members who feel the way that you do. Nobody, I don't believe anybody wants to be here excessively late, but we're here. With regard to public comment, you know, we've had a rule before that public comment should be limited to three minutes. I'm not going to limit anybody, but I'm not going to allow people to go on ad nauseam. So, if you have a point you'd like to make, please do so. If I recognize you, just come up to the podium, state your name and what town you're from. So, is there anyone who'd like to address the Board? And the other thing is, this is not a point, this is not a opportunity to engage in a conversation. This is comment from the public to the Board for us to consider. So, ma'am?
Yes, thank you. Hi, my name is Ann Lowe. I live in Washington, and I'm a parent at Washington Primary School. First, I would like to thank the region, specifically the REACH program and Washington Primary School, for four very successful years of schooling for my two children. In listening to Superintendent Cosentino's budget presentation, I have some considerations specific to changes in staffing and programming. I applaud the district's dedication to expanding the sciences within the school, and I'm excited to see what an enrichment teacher, working in partnership with elementary school teachers, might look like. New programming will be welcome and provide students the opportunity to further their curricular exposure and deepen their understanding of more challenging topics and concepts. Keeping all learners actively engaged at an appropriate level is crucial to sparking academic curiosity and fostering a love of learning in all children. I recognize that adding salaried employees to the region means the possibility of making cuts in other areas. In an ideal academic environment, there would be time and resources to maintain all programs. Sadly, some choices have to be made. I advocate that the Board of Education raise the budget to maintain the full-time Spanish position. If anything, I encourage you to consider expanding the program to include students in the REACH preschool. I have read some convincing reports that the best time for children to be saturated in language learning is before age seven. If one goal of the change in programming is to attract and retain families in Region 12, it will be counterproductive to cut the Spanish program. We are currently in line with peer schools at 30 minutes of Spanish twice a week, grades K through 5. And I do think that lessening the program will cause families to rethink their school choice. However, has, as we have seen with the expansion of the REACH program, the unique offerings that children have, which include music and PE instruction, is bringing more families into Region 12 schools. A couple of parents I know who are quite happy with their kids being at WPS did remark to me that they would, in fact, support considerably more Spanish instruction, not less. And particularly, not less Spanish as a tangential response to the Ag STEM program they supported, in part because it was touted as requiring no such programmatic sacrifices. Spanish is not a luxury offering. I feel it is mandatory within elementary schools. Studies show that learning more than one language boosts brain power in areas of language, memory, and attention. What's more, my children have classmates who are Spanish speakers. I want them to be better able to communicate with their peers, which will develop an even more positive school climate at WPS. If the budget cannot allow for more than a half-time Spanish teacher, I feel it's best to shift the Spanish program to REACH through 3rd grade, and provide professional development to classroom teachers to incorporate Spanish into their curriculum. I see an opportunity to read a book once a week in Spanish, or visit the computer lab as a Spanish-language lab. A parent of a 6th grader raved about her son's French class at Chapag. She is impressed with all the work he is doing, and spoke well of the foreign language program at the middle-school level. I would argue that much of his success is attributed towards language learning at a young age. Region 12 has an opportunity here to enhance an already-strong program. Let's highlight what we do well, and enhance the curriculum in this area to maintain the high quality of education our children are receiving throughout Region 12 schools. I will close with a quote from a friend's email. Her daughter is in kindergarten at WPS. In asking my friend what she thought of the Spanish program, she replied, quote, "My daughter looks quite forward to Spanish, enjoys employing what she learns in school at home, and walks away from each lesson feeling quite accomplished. Let's recognize the value of this program with its continuation." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'd appreciate it if you raised your hand, and then I'll recognize you. Go ahead, ma'am, that's all right.
My name is Krista Tenler. I live in Washington, and I have two children in Burnham that go kindergarten and 2nd grade. I would first like to thank you for extending the Spanish program to K through 2 again. But I would also like to touch on the fact that cutting the minutes isn't really going to help. It has been mentioned many times that we are schools of distinction, and, and that's really a wonderful accomplishment. Yet, as our budget is being presented for the coming year, we are changing and cutting the programs. In a short meeting with our superintendent this past week, we discussed the adding of the Talented and Gifted Program to challenge our students and get bigger admission pull from the families who are attending private schools to challenge their children more. That's fantastic. I see no problem in adding programs to challenge and enrich our students more. Yet, we are cutting Spanish from the younger children. I have an article here from the Duke Talent Identification Program on the cognitive benefits of learning languages and how they support foreign language, educating students starting with pre-K. I have a research article from the National Education Association, which suggests that attitudes about other groups, peoples, are formed by the age of 10, and that they are often shaped between the ages of 4 and 8. Learning a language at a young age helps connect the children with another culture, while they are still open-minded and have not yet begun to restrict their views of others who they perceive to be different. Students of foreign languages tend to have higher scores on standardized tests. Foreign language learners have better listening skills, sharper memory, memories than their monolingual peers. Students who started kindergarten in the first Kansas City Foreign Language Magnet Schools surpassed national averages in all subjects by the time they reached 5th grade. Strong evidence shows that time spent on foreign language study strongly reinforces the core subject areas of reading... the core subject areas of reading, English language literacy, social studies, and math. I made a phone call to Ramsey Hall today. They offer French or Spanish three times a week for 45 minutes. Montessori offers Spanish twice a week for 30 minutes. How can we say that we're going to be able to pull admissions from these private schools if we offer less than they do? If we do not support our elementary schools, are schools of distinction, who will be around to support the wonderful AgSTEM program that we have planned? We say that the AgSTEM program will set up our kids for great jobs, but I would like to remind everyone that many job applications say that bilingual is a plus. With rising Spanish-speaking populations in this country, why not give our students the very best start we can?
Thank you.
My name is Bridgette Buckhite Carney. My daughter Flynn goes to the Burnham School, and I am a resident of Bridgewater. My purpose of speaking today is to suggest to the board that they amend the budget, as well as to create a standard way for people to congregate into the AgSTEM program. In my work life, I am responsible for making budgets, so I understand cutting or reducing a program is sometimes necessary. But it is a universal rule in budgets, that the program with the least amount of resources not be the one that becomes the experiment. If anything, the program that is the most robust, or has the most to offer, should be the grounds for such an experiment. In this particular budget, Burnham students are about to become second-class citizens, second-class citizens in the Region 12 school district. Of course, Burnham students being disadvantaged also has legal repercussions. The Board of Education has a daunting task in front of them: how to create parity. I would submit to you that any budget plan should include risks for such an action. The current budget proposal has the following three risks. Risk number one: one group of students will be educationally disadvantaged compared to the other two, and will not be able to matriculate successfully into the AgSTEM program. I would suggest remediating this risk by continuing to use the current standard curriculum that is used by all the schools. Merging classes and different curriculum than their peers will almost certainly leave a mark in their standardized testing, and they will be disadvantaged. This will have a ripple effect in our blue-ribbon distinction, as many of my peers here have indicated, as well as high school and advanced degrees. Risk number two: people outside the district who are considering moving to our district will either A) not move here, or B) not move into Bridgewater, promulgating our current enrollment issue. Already, two families that I know personally have said they will buy in Roxbury or Washington rather than chance moving to Bridgewater, the redheaded stepchild of Region 12. I say this with affection, my husband is a redhead. Some effort has been made to this effort, and I appreciate that, especially you, Dr. Cosentino, for the time that you have spent with my friends and my family and my colleagues. But I would urge you to remediate this risk by working with Bridgewater to enhance Burnham's ability to attract new students. New Milford's closing of the Pettibone School and the seven 3rd grade classes that are there is certainly a feeding ground for people who want more individualized attention. The AgSTEM program should also attract families and further bolster our declining enrollment. We in Bridgewater, a traditional agrarian community, should be your number-one feeder school. This is inhibited by reduced budgets and reduced opportunities in our classrooms. My last risk, risk number three, is about language as well. Children learn languages faster and with more literacy than adults. A new article that came out today from Inc. Magazine states that children who truly speak another language, truly speak another language, are smarter, have better social skills, and are more likely to go into AgSTEM and AgSTEM-like programs. I speak Italian, German, English, French, and very bad Turkish, and I am living proof that the language you learn as a child keeps with you as an adult. My daughter has been taking Spanish every Blue Moon and every other Tuesday, and she is no more fluent in Spanish than I am. And yo no hablo español. Language fluency is only achievable through progressive frequency, so I would ask for even more language and different language than is currently projected. It will also help the AgSTEM program, as it will be bolstered by international agencies, and I speak from experience, who will hire students who speak two or more languages. Please remediate this issue by making language a more robust priority. I close with saying, I moved to Bridgewater shortly after my parents retired from 24 years in the military. As an Army brat, I have been schooled in public schools, private schools, and Department of Defense schools. I am the daughter of a school teacher, I am the granddaughter of a school teacher, and I am married to a former student, a former educator. While I am not an educator, I know something of this schooling from my military past, and I'm here to tell you that I have not seen this kind of disparity in anything, DOD, public or private. So I believe that if you remediate these three risks that I have described, the end result will be a cohesive program that will show parity for all towns and create a center of excellence in our region and a lighthouse for all who admire the many attributes of our area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kelly Macy, on behalf of Bridgewater. Since the issue of multi-age education arose at the last meeting, I have attempted to research as much as possible regarding the topic and how it will affect Region 12. While the research is not exhaustive, I would like to discuss some of the issues that I felt needed to be addressed. And while I also acknowledge that there have been many articles, comments, and studies identifying both the positive and negative components of multi-age education, with the limited time, I will only discuss the most concerning. My question began with, why is multi-education needed? To achieve better academic success? Obviously not, since this school is already a distinguished school of excellence. So, is multi-age education needed to improve social skills? If so, what are the numbers? What is the disciplinary rate? What improvements are we looking for? Have the Burnham students been interviewed to determine their attitudes towards schools? How have the Burnham students' attitudes towards schools been observed? Has any of this data been kept? Have they been observed being uncooperative? How will that improvement be evaluated? Have the Burnham students been observed being unsupportive or not patient? If so, again, how will any of these improvements be monitored? Have any of these quantifiable numbers been shared with the expert Region 12 has consulted? If social skill development is the issue, have any other methods been used to improve these skills? Have any of the parents been notified of these alleged social skill development deficiencies? If not, why not? So if it's not academic success, and it's not student social skills, then what is it? Why is multi-age education necessary? It's pretty clear there is a significant opposition to implementing multi-age education. Here is a plan that has been developed without parent input, knowing that a previous similar attempt was vastly opposed by parents in the community. There has simply been insufficient information disseminated. If multi-age education is a program that is going to benefit our students, why was it secretly included in the superintendent's budget proposal for the coming year? And why isn't it included for boot school, who will only have seven children in the 3rd grade class next year? If this was such a good plan, why not share all of the information possible with the parents and the community, so that everybody was in agreement? The most significant piece of information to me were the numerous comments by teachers who have actually experienced the multi-age education system. Teachers overwhelmingly have indicated that state standards suffered while students were in a multi-age education environment. This is important, because experts from most every study emphasize that the premise of multi-age education can be successful depending on the teacher's involvement. Based on that, I attempted to research multi-age education as part of a bachelor's degree in teaching, and found that in order to obtain a college degree with any focus in multi-age education, there were approximately 10 specifically related college-credited courses required. What plan does Region 12 have in place to provide the teachers with the training that will be required to be successful? Putting our teachers in this environment without any education or training seems like we are setting them up for failure. Or is the purpose of multi-age education based on cost savings? This cannot be the reason, because multi-age education, if done properly, should cost the schools the same amount of money as a single-grade classroom. Research, however, indicates that multi-age classrooms currently are and have been used as an answer in areas where teacher retention is an issue, or where there is a shortage of teachers, neither of which exists here at Burnham. Is it really fair to risk the students of Burnham's future without more information? In 1990, the state of Kentucky passed an Education Reform Act, which mandated multi-grade primary schools. It was touted as the best educational format where students will have much success. Many presentations and studies focused on Kentucky as a success story. As part of that program, Kentucky needed to request from the federal government a waiver of leniency in scoring of standardized tests. Is Bridgewater, Connecticut, going to make that request to the federal government for more leeway in scoring standardized tests? Is that likely to happen? Is that likely to be granted? Has that even been discussed in presenting the multi-age education plan in Region 12? Has the expert that Region 12 consulted with provided answers to all of these questions so that our board and our administrators can make informed decisions? And while Kentucky made the change to multi-grade classrooms in 1990, that mandate was removed in 1998. In 1991, the Oregon State Legislature called for a feasibility study of multi-education, but never put such approach into place. In 1994, the state of Michigan announced a new initiative for multi-age education classrooms. However, in 1999, the Michigan Department of Education stopped the encouragement of multi-age groupings. A review in September and October of 2010 highlighted that the research in multi-age or multi-grade classrooms is simply too scant, too difficult to interpret, or to make any definitive recommendations, concluding that the scarcity and frailty in the research make any strong recommendations impossible. In conclusion, according to the American Association of School Administrators, the movement toward multi-age education has drastically declined. A review of the literature reveals very little now being written about, and virtually no research being done on multi-age education, a slowed rate of growth, a slowed rate of growth that Region 12's consulted expert even acknowledges. We all know that there are two sides to every story, so when we're only provided with one side, the positive side, what's the other side? What is being hidden? It is only fair to provide us with both sides of this issue and let us make an informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Erin Elevacki, and I have a daughter in the K-1 class at Burnham and a son in the 3rd grade. I'm here tonight to voice my unwavering concern about the proposed 2-3 merge for next year, considering that my daughter will be in 2nd grade. My main concern would be that all Grade 2 kids would be pigeonholed into learning at the same pace as the 3rd graders that they'll be sitting next to. One teacher will be covering two grades worth of science, social studies, writing, second step, et cetera, and my daughter will be at a disadvantage going into this, not having had a full 2nd grade year with a full-time teacher. My daughter's class is the one having to flip-flop between the younger and older children every year. We agreed to be a part of this experiment for the K-1 class only because there would be a full-time teacher and a paraprofessional, who is a former Teacher of the Year. This proposed education model will not work for us, and has stretched our tolerance. I personally have been very involved at Burnham for four years now. I've also been very involved in the structuring of the regional activities, all in an effort towards mending the fences in this region. I love this region, and I love our school, and I'm just asking that my daughter receives the same fundamental, traditional education that the other schools are receiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, good evening. I'm Diana Kelly. I am currently the PTO Vice President at Burnham Elementary. I have three children ranging from ages 12 to 2. One of my children is currently in Burnham, age, uh, grade 3. I have seen the good, the bad, and the ugly in this region over the past nine years I've been here. I've also seen a lot of inconsistency in the region that's made it nearly impossible for us to plant our roots firmly. And quite frankly, I'm a little tired of the fight, but I'm gonna say I, this past year was actually a welcome calm among our region, and it started to feel like we were making steps towards becoming the well-accomplished school system that we worked so hard to be. We supported the AgSTEM renovation with hopes this would be the end of our looming threats of being shut down, and finally, we have this amazing program to draw people in, or families into our towns. We feel a little let down and discouraged by the super's motion to take away our full-time teacher and combine two more grades with others to follow. As you've been hearing tonight, this will not improve our school or our region. Why would young families move to an area that is so inconsistent and negligent in their decisions involving children's education? Burnham is an award-winning, award-winning elementary school. Sorry, it's really emotional. This is why so many families move here. Disturbing the balance among the three schools is only to deter families from moving in. There has to be another option. Another complaint I've been hearing is the massive budget proposal towards the teachers' work area at Chapag Valley. I feel this budget is a little outrageous, considering we have low enrollment issues. The elementary schools are our breeding grounds to help feed our middle school, high school, so it would be wiser to address making all three schools appealing and market the region in a positive light. This will then make AgSTEM a huge success if we can fill all three schools. We want to work together, but here we are again, we're back in the papers, our parents are frustrated, pulling their kids out of the school system, and some are thinking of moving out of the region altogether. This is not going to cause families from other towns to come busting down our doors and demand to enroll their kids. Our town officials have spent this past year working hard on marketing our town and looking for new ways to bring families in. Please consider another option to help keep our full-time teacher and math interventionist, so we can continue to work on being a consistent and united region. Right now, it really feels like these decisions will set Burnham up to fail. I want to close by just saying I love this region. My husband went to this school, this region. I want all of my children to go here, and I plan to fight for all of them to have the Burnham experience, and I thank you for listening and for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Angela Maturulo, and I'm a Burnham parent. After I spoke to you last week, Dr. Cosentino contacted me to discuss her position and my concerns. This conversation- This conversation and hearing from the administration this evening has led to more concerns. Dr. Cosentino during our conversation claimed that the 2-3 merge was not proposed in a secretive manner, but claims it was up to the administration of Burnham and the PTO to advise the parents ahead of the plan. However, she went on to say that the board had to be the first body to meet aware of this proposal. I couldn't reconcile these two comments. And after listening to Mrs. DeBrito tonight, I still can't reconcile with them. I cannot understand why this would be put in as a line item without an advance notice to the parents of Burnham or to the entire region. When I questioned Dr. Cosentino as to why Booth and WPS were not being subjected to merge classrooms and suggested there must be an alternative to declining enrollment, I was told, and I quote, "Washington is tired of paying for you." The second quote as to Booth was, "They don't wanna merge with you." These comments are disheartening. We are a district. We should care about educating all of our students. And as each town pays per capita for its students, Washington is not paying for me, nor am I suggesting that we merge with Booth. I am however reminding you that numbers change. From 2002 through 2010, there have been years when WPS had as few as 10 students in a class while Burnham had up to 24. If these numbers reverse again, the Burnham School community will support Washington and Booth in an effort to protect their kids. We are a district. If any issue affects one of us, it affects all of us. According to Dr. Cosentino, the magic number is seven. We have six coming into our second grade next year. When I asked Dr. Cosentino if Burnham were to get one more second grader, raising next year's number to seven, which he revert back to the two classrooms, she told me no. Yet next year Booth will have seven kids in the third grade, as one is moving to Woodbury and 10th in the fourth grade. Why is there no merge there? Seven in a class is unacceptable at Burnham, so it requires a merger to 14, while seven is acceptable at Booth and does not require a merge class of 17. What is the magic number? These are the facts as I understand them. And I also understand that there are parents from Booth and WPS here to speak out against Burnham's interests, although I can't imagine why. As Dr. Cosentino said last Monday, the other schools in Region Twelve will eventually be required to have multi-age and multi-grade classrooms. So Booth and WPS, I am speaking out for you too. Why and when will this happen, and why not this year for Booth? Dr. Cosentino claims there are many other schools doing this multi-age, multi-grade class, yet she has not identified them, aside from Warren, which did not use the model that is being proposed here, and may I remind you, is not a school of distinction. If size truly is the issue, then an alternative would be to team teach. Keep our certified second-grade teacher and third-grade teacher in the same classroom. Let their kids have their own teacher for all academic subjects, science, math, reading, social studies, and they can be brought together for music, art, and gym. When I questioned Dr. Cosentino about the $250,000 for teacher lounge, her comments to me were, "They need a nice place to meet with parents, and we need a nice lounge to attract teachers." As a parent, I would meet with my child's teacher in a basement if I had to. While I don't disagree that they do need a nice teacher's lounge, I feel it can be done for much less than $250,000. As for attracting teachers, I don't want a teacher who comes to teach here for the lounge. I want the teacher who says, "Paint the walls, give me new carpet, perhaps a microwave, and put the balance of that $250,000 into my classroom for my students." While I'm not against a nice lounge, $250,000 in this economy is unconscionable. If you are doing that, you're taking it away from my kids. If you need to do it, spread it out over a number of years. It doesn't all have to be done in the same year. Dr. Cosentino also commented to me that there are times she walks around Burnham and there are four teachers in one classroom. In the seven years I have had kids at that school, I have never seen that. However, I have seen a teacher from a grade level whose kids might be in music, art, or gym, in another's teacher classroom, helping a student who might need a little extra help with reading, writing, or math. That is why we are a school of distinction. Based on Dr. Cosentino's comments that this is about socialization and the magic number of seven, and given the inconsistencies behind those reasons, I reiterate, if you feel the need to do something to combine classes, and I don't think that it's logical, consider the alternative of a second and third grade team teaching with certified full-time teachers for each. I submit to this board that after you truly consider what you hear tonight from our parents, if you do not give us back our school, our second and third grade classes, your agenda clearly is not the education of our kids, or the continued growth and the quality of education at Region Twelve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, yes?
My name is Evan Warner, and I will be speaking for Bridgewater.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name?
Evan Warner.
All right, thank you, Evan.
I'm a sixth grader, I'm a sixth-grade student at Chapag. I attended Burnham. In fifth grade, I won the Superintendent's Award, and Chapag, I've had straight A's for both marking periods. Part of the reason for my success is my teachers at Chapag and at Burnham. When my mom told me that Burnham wanted to combine the second and third grades, I said, "That's a horrible idea." My mom asked me why, Evan. As a student who attended the second and third grade at Burnham, here's why. Number one, they are very different grades and have lots of different topics have to be covered. Number two, in the third grade, S-Back start, and the students need to be prepared and focused to do their best on the test. Number three, it is going to be hard to keep everyone focused and to learn what they need for their grade level. I have brothers, I have one brother in the second grade and one brother in the third grade at Burnham, and I want them to have the same experience and education I had. Please don't give them any less than you gave me.
Anyone else? Thank you, Evan. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Angelica Jacob, and I am a Bridgewater resident, fairly new, might I add. While I'm not sure of the real reason behind the 2-3 grade merge, socialization of six second-grade students has been raised as a possible issue. Dr. Cosentino has stated that studies show that six students in a class is detrimental to their socialization. Dr. Cosentino fails to cite to which study she is referring. I have done some research on this issue and have learned the following. I have read studies done by the Public School Review in 2015, the Denver Post, Princeton, and the Star Project. The conclusion reached by these studies contradict what has been presented here as a reason for the merge. The pros of small class sizes are the ability for a teacher to use numerous classroom strategies, personal attention to students, additional instruction, a substantial boost to academic achievement, more flexibility for teachers to use different approaches, and the kids are more likely to participate. The cons consist of, well, money. It's more expensive to fund smaller class sizes. In a district where it is difficult to find qualified teachers, it is better to have one good teacher in a larger class than two subpar teachers. All of the research was consistent in that small class sizes have the greatest impact in the early grades, and kids are engaged, are less engaged in larger classes. If socialization is the real issue, that can easily be accomplished in art, music, and gym classes at recess, as well as after-school library programs that are offered to our I'd also add, like to add on a personal note, as a new resident of Bridgewater, my children are the new kids on the block. My family and I just relocated here from Brookfield in October of this school year. They have transitioned smoothly and successfully into their small classrooms and are socially sound and happy where they are. Relocating to a new town is a challenging decision, no matter the circumstances. Our decision was even more difficult because we loved our previous home and town and schools. We did not need to move, and the deal sealer was the education and the class sizes available at Burnham. If this meeting had happened just a few months ago, the Jacobs family decision would have been very different. This is not what we anticipated, and having just moved from a district walking through very difficult challenges and decimated school budgets, we were hoping to not have to speak in defense of my children's education at a different podium, in a different location, feeling the same frustration. Thank you.
Stephen Jacob, Bridgewater. Thank you to the Region Twelve Board of Education, and thank you Superintendent Cosentino for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. As a new resident of Bridgewater, I'm deeply concerned for the educational well-being of my three children, Maya, Lucas, and Amelia. In particular, the recent information that I received of the movement toward expanding toward another multi-grade classroom at Burnham Elementary has me quite concerned. Multi-grade classrooms are not the norm, and will propose an undue amount of stress on my two children attending Burnham Elementary. What has been a smooth transition for us into a nationally recognized Blue Ribbon School has turned into an experimental pilot program. I encourage our neighbors in Washington and Roxbury, I see you back there. To unite with Bridgewater in opposing this action, for your time may be fast at hand. Meeting state standards and preparing our children for state exams can be quite difficult in a mixed-grade classroom. Teaching math and science can prove to be particularly daunting in a traditional single-grade classroom, further compounded and increasingly difficult in a mixed-grade classroom. If teachers are not used to teaching two grade levels, expectations by them might not be accurate, and thus limiting the children's education for an entire year. Children that don't work well independently can be lost. With all three towns very attractive and low mill rates, this is unacceptable and not necessary. Bridgewater's mill rate is approximately 17.25, Roxbury 13.7, Washington's is 13.75. All three towns celebrate some of the lowest mill rates in the region. As a newcomer to Bridgewater, I can honestly say that I would have looked elsewhere to live had I known there was a chance that my children would be part of this educational experiment. The negative impact this will have on most of our, on our most valued asset, our homes, will no doubt be quite negative at a time when few towns need a reduction in the grand list. This will be a negative blight on the entire region, and I would ask that our neighbors band with us and ask that the Board of Education respectfully maintain the educational standard that Burnham Elementary has achieved by maintaining single-grade classrooms excluding the current kindergarten and first grade. I implore the Board of Education to not proceed forward with the multi-grade classroom. Please consider the litigation and negative press the region will receive and the impact it may have on our AgSTEM program. I would ask the Board of Education to remember that we have one chance to give our children the best education possible, and there are no do-overs. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Mark Lyon. Resident of Washington and the First Selectman. I'm here to kinda interrupt the parade, I think. I wanna commend the board on coming together and putting together a budget with a .8 percent increase. That's a commendable thing. You've shown over the last several years improvements in your educational system and the education our children are receiving. This is a lot different than when I was, had kids in this system and we were arguing that 25 kids was really too much for a fourth-grade teacher. But I do see this, there's some issues here. While you, it was only a .8 percent increase, there's a 5 percent decrease in student population. You reduced your faculty by 1.9 but added 1.0. So you have a lot less customers and your budget's still going up. When I look at equity across the region, I know that all of our students are receiving a good education and their current test scores show that. So I would leave, I implore the Board of Ed and the administration to at least adhere to your recommendations in this budget and carry on with your good works. When we get into equity, there's two sides to the education question in our region. Equity in education and equity in expense. This current budget because of math, there's going to be a $500,000-plus increase in Washington's education budget and a decrease in Bridgewater and Roxbury's. That represents about a .5, 4-5 percent increase in our mill rate just for education. If I give no raises, I spend no new money, my budget is gonna go up 3 percent this year based on education. So as you wrestle with these education questions, I implore you to also consider the fiscal ones as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mike Croft. I live in Washington. I have a son at Washington Primary School. I wanna thank our dedicated and creative teachers and administrators and staff, and of course, our volunteer board members for their great work. We've had a wonderful experience in Region Twelve schools, and I'm sure that will continue. I wanna speak just briefly about my interpretation of a couple of pieces of this budget which in general has my support. When the Spanish opportunities decrease and the talented and gifted opportunities increase, it does seem like there is a decrease in opportunity for most students and an increase for the very few. I don't know about the idea that this is a potential magnet for families to move or stay in the region. Anybody who's savvy enough to pay attention to a talented and gifted program as a draw is also going to be savvy enough to know that identification is uncertain, that their child being identified for that program is not a certainty. And so, you know, moving for that is gonna be a risky proposition, and I don't know about its effectiveness as a draw. So, it would leave me with questions like, if we are having a revamped identification process for talented and gifted students, how many students in my son's class are gonna be removed for pull-out instruction? It just makes me think that we have a small school and that we had moved to a point where we were focused on identifying the gifts of all children, and with that knowledge helping them to soar. And it seems to me that establishing a talented and gifted program that is going to increase the spotlight on identification of talented and gifted moves away from that enlightened perspective. And I do think that Chapag and the region in general have a reputation of being enlightened, partly because of the lack of tracking and the lack of leveling that exists at Chapag and has for a long time been avoided to the greatest extent possible. And I think that a talented and gifted program that would, I think inevitably lead to a focus on identification and probably pull-out instruction seems to fly in the face of that. I thank you very much for your great work. Those are a couple of thoughts.
Thank you. Anyone else, sir?
Good evening. Jeremy Tuller from Washington. I have a kindergartner and a second grader that go to Burnham. I'm a little nervous tonight. Like some of the other parents, I also received some calls from Dr. Cosentino. And when I expressed my concerns about this multi-age or multi-grade, I'm not sure what terminology we're using tonight, program, her answer to me was, "If you don't like it, pull your kids out of Burnham and send them to Washington." That's a quote, that's what you said. And that is not a solution to the problem. I'm a solutions person, okay? I also told her that I had spoken to my son, Jacob, who went through the kindergarten, first grade, being mixed. And I asked him, "Hey, what do you think of this? Now that you're in second grade, just second grade, instead of being in the mixed K-1, what do you think about that?" He's horrified. He wants nothing to do with it. When I told Dr. Cosentino that, she said it was inappropriate for me to have that conversation with my son. I don't understand, I told you this wasn't personal when we were on the phone, but again, these are not solutions, you know? This is gonna affect our children, and they deserve to be treated equally. Yes, I could pull my kids out and be in Washington and they wouldn't have to worry about being in mixed classrooms, except the expressed intent is to roll this out universally throughout the region, eventually. So, do I do that and save myself and my family the, you know, the heartache of this? Knowing that in a couple of years, when they're in fourth and fifth grade, the same thing's going to happen in Washington? This slide, I pointed to it last time I was up here, I'm going to point to it again, creating opportunities to the future. Population swings are cyclical. It happens. We're going to cut second and third grade, we're going to combine them. What happens when the population swings back the other way? Are we then going to stand up, add two more teachers so that we have to run two second and third grade mixed classrooms? I don't, I don't see that making a lot of sense. I don't understand how we're building capacity for the future by compromising now. Doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. One of the other things, I totally support a teacher's area at Chapag. I totally support the STEM program. We're so excited to have that. Our teachers deserve absolutely the best. But, I'll tell you this, I don't know what the bylaws are for the town, but to the extent that they're allowed, I would volunteer my time to do painting. I would, I would donate some of the supplies to cut down on that budget out of my pocket. And I'm sure if you get some of these other parents here, listen, we want the best for our teachers, let's try and find the cheapest way to do what we can. Let's act as a community and do it together. We are touting this STEM program. I looked at that budget for fifteen grand in bookshelves. We're touting this STEM program, let's move to the future. Why do we need fifteen thousand dollars in bookshelves? Why aren't we buying a couple terabytes of storage? And putting all that on digital media for everybody to have available to them? Wouldn't that be the STEM solution to that problem? I think that's it. You know, thank, thank you to the Board. I know you got tough work ahead of you. I know you're, you're all trying to do what's best for our kids. Hopefully some of this argument sink in, it makes sense.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ma'am?
Hello, I'm Maureen Bilak and I am a-
I'm sorry ma'am, I didn't hear that.
Uh, Maureen Bilak, and I'm a resident now from Bridgewater, in Bridgewater for fifteen years. And I want to first apologize because I'm the worst public speaker you'll hear tonight. On that note, I am also here because I'm a mother of three. Two of my children have graduated Burnham. One's heading to high school, one's in sixth grade. And I'm here on behalf of my seven-year-old. And I'm going to apologize if I get emotional, but I think everybody has a soft spot for the baby and their family, and that's mine. And I want to give her the education that my other two were rewarded. We have stayed in Bridgewater for fifteen years. As everybody is leaving Connecticut in droves, we are here for the long haul. We all are. There's something about this state that we all love. I was born here, I will die here. My kids will be raised here. I have no intent in leaving, so I can't give the threat if I'm upset, I'm going to leave. I'm not. My child was the guinea pig for the merge of the kindergarten and first grade class, and I supported it because I'm desperate to keep this school open and keep it functioning as it should be. The second half of the year for her fell apart, and not with any educational purposes, just the maturity factor wasn't there for the whole group. On that note, I have some concerns about what's going to happen should she merge again with the second and third graders next year. What are the plans to adjust for the negative characteristics of multi-age education? Negative characteristics of multi-age education have consistently been identified as older students who will spend more time helping and tutoring younger students rather than being themselves challenged. The theory is that older students are learning when they help teach younger students by reinforcing their understanding of the content material. But, what about new areas of learning for older students? Older, more talented students can be neglected. Younger students become overwhelmed or discouraged. Is this where bullying presents itself? Is this where older students become immature? Is this where the taunting exists? Unfortunately, these are real events that occur. Events which have been identified in many research articles regarding multi-age education, yet here we have not been provided with answers to these questions. On a personal note, I was diagnosed with a very chronic illness last year, and I'm told for my health to avoid stress at all costs. This is putting a huge tax on my personal health, but I will take that chance and stand up here in front of all these people and express my worry and concern for my child's education. All I'm asking is just give her a chance, like every other student. I am a taxpayer and I just want what's best for my child. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes ma'am?
Hi, my name is Tammy Hogan Maynard. My son was also, I'm from Bridgewater, son goes to Bridgewater, I should say. I'm actually from Washington, so I can understand the concept of tax dollars being kind of a little bit of a problem.
I'm sorry ma'am, did you say that you're from Washington but your child goes to Burnham?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Both my children, actually.
Thank you.
My son was in the K-1 combined classroom. And it was what it was. It seems to me, and call me uneducated, but I'm not understanding why we want to combine the, yeah, two grades once again. Financially, it's not helping if we continue to have two teachers present in my eyes. But as it stands now, our school principal's challenged to attend both Burnham and Booth at the same time, and is not present at either one at every given time. As some of, some of you may know, my children live here in Washington, I chose to send them to Burnham every year. I write a letter to Ms. Pat, Dr. Cosentino, allowing me, granting me permission to send both my children to Burnham, even though there is a lack of number. I, I'm not quite sure why we wouldn't, you know, be doing something to try to help that as far as consolidation or something with these two small schools. It seems that Booth and Burnham go back and forth routinely. Washington, if it's that much of a burden financially for them, I don't think that that's fair either. So, yeah, like most of the other parents have said, I think that there needs to be something that gives. It'd be less of a shock factor when they transition up to Chapag Middle School at sixth grade, as my daughter is going into fifth grade, and that's a huge, huge grade to have not be combined in my eyes. As I see, it'd be more, much more important to use one of these schools to be able to aid in fixing up Chapag and areas of need as the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that's proposed for our school lounge up here at Chapag. I wanted to talk briefly about the teachers who'll be expected to teach under this new format. The most significant piece of information to me were the numerous comments by other teachers who have actually experienced the multi-age education. Teachers overwhelmingly indicated the state standards had suffered while students were in the multi-age education environment, as we've heard many of the, you know, different reasons. What plans does Region 12 have to place to provide the teachers with the training that they need to be required to be successful? How are the teachers possibly going to receive the significant number of college-accredited courses to begin the multi-age education this fall? Have the costs associated? Once again, cost, cost, cost. Been provided with teacher training? Do we have that determined? Do we have it all outlined? What have you? What's the plan for their training? The teachers at Burnham are personally invested in their students to expect that they get them prepared to teach in the multi-age educational environment without training as an unfair burden. Further, has the Expert Region 12 consulted and provided any data showing the personal effects on teachers who are put in this type of setting? Unprepared? If so, what are they? If not, why? As we're all concerned with the teachers' well-being who have thus far took an interest in and taught the students so well up to this point. As for teacher training, has there been any thought as to where the teachers would be able to obtain the specific training that would be needed? Could it be the training and will it be had or through the Multi-Age Institute, an institute that was founded by the Expert Region 12 and that what they had, who had, they had consulted with? If the training were to occur, the National Multi-Age Institute, literature from the institute show that they offer a two-week training course in multi-age education. How can the two-week course going compare with the ten college-accredited courses that may be needed? What was the cost? How many teachers and administrators would attend? Is there any certification at any level for these teachers? Study after study, the conclusion is that the teachers must be trained. End of story. Teachers today lack the basic supplies, let alone organizational support, training or time to organize the classroom. Manage by observing, organize a teaching system, instruct those who need it directly. Remember to model the method of scientific inquiry instead of asking and answering kids' questions. And identify and cultivate a few natural leaders who will lead the group in taking advantage of opportunities afforded by a peer-to-peer learning environment. Without training and teacher input, it seems that these teachers will be set up for failure. Unfortunately, I don't have too many teachers in the audience today. For a serious program based on educating students, the curriculum should be discussed with the teachers, parents, and community to determine what's best and what works best for the students of Burnham. As well as Washington Primary and, and Booth, I agree. Multiple studies found that the multi-age education, and I have them noted, requires more planning, more professional development, more materials, more support, and the lack of any, if these will have any impact on the success of the program. If we are planning on educating via multi-age classroom-based research and studies, another weakness existed in most of these studies which concluded that the true effects of multi-age or multi-grade classes would not be accurately determined because there is a lack of data on the children's levels of achievement prior to the entry to the multi-age or multi-grade classes. More problems seem to exist in how the multi-age classroom is or is not organized, and there are no answers to these questions for Burnham thus far. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Amanda Telford and I live in Bridgewater. I have two children entering this school district very soon, and I didn't write anything down, so I know that the people who came before me spoke much more eloquently than I can on the reasons why I am opposed to the multi-grade classroom. But I do want to thank the Board and the Administration. The presentation in the beginning, I thought, was really well-done to see how much thought went into it, but I do think that you need to sort of listen to the things that we're saying and the reasons why we are opposed to it. But I also want to speak as a teacher. I am a teacher in a different district. I have experience with some of this, it's, obviously it's not going to be perfectly parallel, but there will be a lesson at the end, so I apologize if I start to ramble. I teach high school, I teach a world language, but it is not one of the mainstream languages. So, for years, I have taught a combined three and four-level class. It's not ideal, nobody thought it was ideal, but it was necessary and it was what it was and we made do with what we had. After years of teaching that class, the students and the parents came together and decided they wanted an AP level. So in order to have the AP level class, I never needed to advocate for this, I never needed to ask for it. The Board and the Administration knew instinctively those levels needed to be separated. You cannot get the kids to reach a higher level, a higher standard of education to take that test if they are combined in a class with other students. So they knew, once there became a test grade attached to it, that they had to separate the three and the four level. So in the past year, we've been doing that and it's been, you know, it's a measurable difference between the years before and the, how far I could get those students, how much better I can get them to achieve now that the two levels are separated. So, obviously, you know, this is not a parallel situation. These are high school students, it's totally different. But my school district, the reputation of my school district does not lie on how my students do on a world language test, on an off-mainstream world language, but it does lie on how the students do on an elementary school test. The reputation of your district is in your elementary schools. If you have schools of distinction, it's that, it's in that way because of what they're doing. If you combine those levels, it does take away from how those students are going to perform. Obviously, some of them will probably do just fine, but overall, they can't all get there. You're, you're going to have trouble, and I've seen it happen in my own classrooms. So I just wanted to give that lesson to you, to give you something to consider, but I hope that you guys, you know, good luck with your decision. And please listen to us and I hope that what we say helps. And I hate speaking in front of people, I'm sorry. It's much easier when you're teenagers and you have to be there.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Julie Stewart. I'm from Bridgewater and I have two Chapag students. And I'm realizing I should have made my font size about fourteen and it's an eight, so... I love the young moms who can read off their phone, but that's not me. Multi-age teaching is a significant change to a traditional K-through-five elementary school education. If the Administration feels that multi-age is a better teaching methodology for our students at the elementary level, there needs to be an appropriate rollout, there needs to be parent buy-in, there needs to be sufficient teacher training, and it needs to be absorbed and accepted by all of our communities. None of these elements exist in the current plan. When AgSTEM was introduced, there were weekend meetings, videos, evening meetings, experts from existing AgSTEM schools for months and months to explain to all constituents what AgSTEM is all about. When multi-age was introduced about two weeks ago, there was no thoughtful rollout and no buy-in. The Administration has moved forward on the concept without any consideration to the community, students, or parents. Four years ago, multi-age classes were introduced by Superintendent Bruce Storm in a proposal to combine fourth and fifth grades at all three elementary schools. There was consistency and parity in his proposal, in his proposal, which we say is imperative in a regional school system. Parents and community members from all three towns had a chance to weigh in and packed the auditorium with a resounding no. Some of the comments came from local Montessori experts who said, "Absolutely not. This is not a Montessori school where teachers get a minimum of two years of training and it never works when you eliminate or reduce teachers. In fact, with multi-age, you need more resources, not less." Immediately following the outcry, the idea was tabled. It was reassuring that the voices of our communities mattered and were considered. Multi-age is not done in any of the school systems that are participating in AgSTEM. It is not done in any of the schools that Bridgewater is trying to draw families from. People are not familiar, they are not comfortable, and when you do the research, for every study that says it's got some benefits, there are ten that says it's got way more drawbacks. The concept peaked in the state of Kentucky in the nineteen eighties, but quickly waned when standardized testing made it virtually impossible to teach and compete with other traditional schools on test scores. This weekend's article in the Waterbury Republican quoted our superintendent as saying that "we are trying to make multi-age a lighthouse for our region." Shouldn't we be focusing on AgSTEM? Isn't that our lighthouse right now? Do we really need bad press, families leaving the region, discord between the towns and the parents because it's being done to one school and not the others for what amounts to four tenths of one percent of the budget? In summary, there has not been a thoughtful or thorough rollout. The plan is too hurried. This is not good timing for our region. We need calm and consistency and a focus on AgSTEM and let the elementary schools continue a traditional style of education. Several parents already take advantage of open enrollment by choosing a school within the region but outside of their hometown. With a little effort, our low enrollment problem in one school could easily be solved with just a few tweaks to even out class size. I urge the Board of Education to please amend the budget and continue a traditional style of education in all three of our elementary schools for the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Sue Ann Sibbit. I'm a resident of Bridgewater. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I've been the Burnham School PTO Secretary for seven-plus years, and I have a daughter in ninth grade at Chapag and a son in fifth grade at Burnham. And although we won't be directly impacted next year, I'm here in support of all the families at Burnham that might be. I'm concerned about the proposed merge second and third grade and the concerned, the concerns raised against the children, raised about the children not getting enough socialization due to the small classroom sizes. It seems to me that the argument raised appears to be an assumption- It seems to me that the argument raised appears to be an assumption rather than factual. Burnham does an amazing job at creating opportunities for all grades to interact with one another. Between all the school activities, student council, enrichment, garden club, recess, to name a few, the children tend to make friendships, learn together, and look out for one another. I love how this philosophy carries forward with the student into the middle school, high school. Merging of grades second and third, and subsequently other grades down the road, does not give us the same educational platform as Washington Primary and Booth. We are a region that supports three towns and its elementary schools. In each school, we should have the same learning platform, so all the children have the same advantages. As much as we are one region, and I mean this with all respect, it just seems like we're trying to isolate Bridgewater with an entirely new platform. I do not find this approach fair or beneficial to the children or the teachers. I'm certain the families of each of the towns would agree that we all need to have the same educational platform. I'm looking for all three towns to unite and support one another in the decision to maintain a K through five at Burnham, plus Booth and Washington Primary, should this be a consideration down the road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir.
John Boniuto from Washington. I've been a resident of this school system for 37 years, and as Jeremy suggested, I have seen a cyclical population rise and falls over those same 37 years. Our one younger son graduated in 1995 with 48 students in his 12th grade class. And population decline is a concern. It's a concern in every small community all across America. But to overreact is kind of silly, really. I think, I'd like to add my thoughts on the teachers' workroom, too. Was it 8,000 square feet for the workroom?
Yes.
I think $23,000 to paint it is kind of a waste of a lot of good money. I think you could probably get some painters in there for a lot less. But let's talk about saving money in the budget. A primary concern to me is subsidizing the busing to Sherman, for the Sherman students, who already get reduced tuition. And in fact, they pay less in tuition to Chapag than they pay to New Milford and New Fairfield. And New Fairfield and New Milford do not pay their busing. If and when AgSTEM comes to town, are we going to pay the busing for the other five towns? No. Why do we do for Sherman? Tutors. And we have excess capacity in our classrooms? Who are these tutors? Are they educators? Are they, you know, where do they come from? And how come we need tutors when our class sizes are so small? The AgSTEM advisor, $25,000. I just don't know who that is, how that is, why that is, or what it's going to accomplish two years before the school opens. I guess that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ma'am.
Thank you. Barbara Henry, First Selectman, Town of Roxbury. You need a new one of these. This is terrible. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I did come here tonight to commend the board and the superintendent on her budget because it is the first time in 15 years that the Town of Roxbury is seeing a decline in that budget. We have been carrying a lot for many, many years. However, I did learn a lot tonight also. And I don't envy you in your position. I sat there myself, and I know that you all have the best interest of this region at heart. Someone brought up the talented and gifted teacher, which I had not even thought about. But when I sat on the board, and Pete, you were right next to me, I voted against this program. And I voted against it because, at the time, it was not funded correctly. It did not, and it also did not have a teacher who was trained to be a talented and gifted teacher. It was always a teacher who was coming back in that may have had their hours cut. It could be a gym teacher one year, a math teacher the next year. So there was no consistency, and I didn't see the benefit in pulling students out of the classroom. And that is how Talcott Mountain came about, because it brought the talent from outside into the classroom where everyone could benefit. I always felt if you had a student who was sitting there and just not paying attention, maybe he was bored or whatever, but if there was something about computer science that was brought into the class as a whole, that might light a fire under him, because that might be his thing. And he would never, ever get that when these other students were being pulled out. Had they funded this years ago correctly, I would have voted for it because we had so many students in our classes. I mean, my daughter went through Booth Free School, K through five, with 28 students. And it was just a very different scenario. But this gentleman before that spoke about it, the talented and gifted, there are, there are so few students in there if you're going to pull them out. I just, I think that that just needs a relook. The two and three, whatever grades, the combined classrooms, it's coming to Booth eventually also, we know that. When we all voted to keep these elementary schools, at least I knew, this was not a sustainable thing without change. And, you know, I'm not an expert in this. I leave it to the experts to say that this is something that can work. But if the talented and gifted teacher is a new hire, maybe you rethink this and put off the combining of the classrooms another year. I mean, that's just a thought in Burnham. I understand what these parents are saying now. The teachers' work area, I'm here to say, you know, we have a 1% fund at capital, and that is what that should be taken out of. That should be pulled out. The $250,000 should come out of the operating budget and be taken out of the capital budget. I do think it could be pared down also. I think that's a lot of money for 8,000 square feet. And last, the threats of litigation are very disheartening, and they do nothing to keep the calm that I have heard about tonight. And I hope that people are not going to go that route. I think that we have some very dedicated people on this board that are going to listen to everything that everyone said. We have a superintendent that's done an outstanding job, I think, in this region, and the teachers, and they're going to get together and they're going to figure something out that will benefit everyone. If it stays that it's two and three combined, it's because that you've really thought about all that's been said, and you think otherwise. I don't envy you in your position. I don't want to see the budget increase. Roxbury has, the towns, and I know I have the other selectmen, First Selectmen here, have pulled back and pulled back and pulled back, trying to keep the taxes down, trying to keep that mill rate down, so that we can pay and fund the education budget. This is one year that Roxbury's had relief, and I need to do some capital projects in my own town. So anyway, I thank you for all the hard work, what the superintendent's done. I don't envy you, and good luck. I do appreciate you.
Good evening.
My name is Susan Stumpf. I'm a Bridgewater resident. I have a ninth grader and two sixth graders at Chapag, and all of my kids went through Burnham, and they had a wonderful experience. I served on the Board of Education from April 2013 to June 2015, so I get how difficult it is to, from the inside out, the numbers, the budget, balancing the needs of the district with the dropping enrollment and still targeting high-quality education that we are known for. We're known for it. I also remember, as Julie Stewart had mentioned, the grade four or five blending proposal, and what a challenge it was, what a challenging time it was for our region. There's just no, there was no research that shows that it was indeed a benefit. The higher the grade level, the more difficult the curriculum in the respective grades, and it just makes it really difficult to teach. The K-1 blending may have worked, although it appears to have mixed reviews. The expectations are not what they are in grades two to three. I'm interested in speaking specifically to that. The, I hold in high regard and have high hopes for the partnership that developed between the leaders of our three communities and the administration. After the referendum vote, there was a real effort put forward to address, as creatively as possible, the dropping demographics in each of the towns and keep the focus on high-quality education. And I want to, I want to just state that Bridgewater has been at that table. We have been at that table, fully looking at the dropping demographics, and we need to look creatively at drawing families. Blending grades is not going to draw families. There is no research that says it's a benefit. If anything, there is research that shows kids don't do better, they may do slightly worse. And depending on your take on what slightly worse means, a loss is still a loss in terms of an opportunity to optimize education. That is our mission, right? Optimize every student's education. It is much harder to attract families to our towns, and that will create more problems. Bridgewater is one of the feeder towns. We, as a region, did not, didn't everyone feel a real shot in the arm after the AgSTEM program was passed? There's a real momentum. This is a very positive and promising time. And to hobble a feeder school, our elementary, one of our elementary schools, by combining grades would not empower Bridgewater to attract residents to our town and continue to get students into Burnham and into Chapag. It will result in a lack of parity. We heard through the long-range planning process prior to, leading up to, the referendum, how important parity is in the delivery of education. There is no parity. You heard from parents whose experience with the blended K-1. It didn't feel the same to those kids. Didn't feel the same to those parents. And that ends up being a problem, and there is a perception of disparity between the towns. We need to plant the seeds to draw people to our towns, right? It will not help us, us as a region, as partners, to achieve that shared goal of the successful feeder schools. I can tell you that Bridgewater residents are paying attention. They're paying attention to, you know, what we can do in our town to attract families to this region, and we're looking to move forward. But I implore this board to roll back the proposal of the grade two, three merge. I love the idea of the open enrollment letter. I would encourage perhaps adding transportation. Someone who wants to put their students in a different school may find the need to provide transportation prohibitive, day in, day out, before and after school. It is not, it's not something a working family can do. We want to do whatever we can to attract students. We do want to attract good teachers as well. Let me just take a moment to talk about the lounge. $250,000 is a steep price tag. I think our teachers are certainly worth revamping what's going on back there, because it desperately needs something. It needs something. I would rather see something implemented over time. I like the idea of the 1% fund. I love the idea of the work party. Let's roll up our sleeves, we can knock that down. We do it at our homes, let's do it, you know, we can help save money. I think there's money that's better spent elsewhere, including keeping the Spanish program as is. We have a great opportunity, and now we are at crossroads, and we need to keep our elementary schools as they are so they can become those strong feeder schools for Chapag down the road and our AgSTEM program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ma'am.
Hello, Jessica Granger from Danbury. I tuitioned my daughter into Booth Free. And as some of you can imagine, going to Booth Free, I passed Burnham. Why did I choose Booth? Because kindergarten and one was merged at Burnham was a key factor. I was unsure about that, didn't know how that would work, didn't know how my daughter would do in that environment. But I came to the region because of the small class size. It works great for my daughter, it's not overwhelming for her. She has 12 in her class at Booth, and at times, that seems big. I see the poor teacher's hair at the end of the day. And I volunteer in the classroom, and my hair looks like hers after about 30 minutes. So it's definitely a challenge, and I really enjoy the region, I enjoy the small class size, I enjoy all the towns and different things about each of the towns, you know, and I'm just here to promote keeping the grades separate as they are. I'm here from Danbury. I heard of another family in Bridgewater that came from Danbury. I just learned of Brookfield people that came here, which is very encouraging. And to keep that trend going, some smart choices need to be made. And one of those is keeping the grades separate as they should be, to build, you know, these schools to feed the very promising and exciting AgSTEM program that we all support, and not spending an excessive amount of money on the teachers' workroom, like everyone has said. I ran a construction crew for over 12 months myself, and yes, there can be some cost savings there. And then Spanish, like everyone else said as well, not to belabor it. It's very important. Languages are critical in this day and age. It's not something to be cut, and I was very disappointed when I heard that my daughter would potentially not be getting it in first grade. So I second everything that has been said, much more specifically here tonight, and a lot of people have done their research, and I'm just here to give you the opinion from one of the incoming families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Narina Denning. I live in Bridgewater. I have two children, they're in second and fourth grade. Basically, I'm really imploring the Board of Ed not to combine second and third graders. The curriculum is totally different, and being in third grade, it is their foundation as far as their learning skills. It's not high school, it's not college. This is what sets them, from being, going to high school dropout to being a college graduate. So please... So, please, I ask you to think long and hard before making any lifelong decisions for our children, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next, yes, sir.
Good evening. Um, I'm Curtis Reed from Bridgewater, uh, the first selectman. Thanks for weathering all these comments tonight, and I think, uh, you've heard some very, uh, strong, uh, arguments. I wouldn't say opinions. I think they're very thoughtful and well-presented from a variety of people. I did not meet with Pat the other day. I talked to Pat on the phone about this, um, and urged that, uh, they reconsider this option of merging. All weekend, I've been getting calls and emails and worries of parents, and I'm impressed with how it was presented respectfully and thoughtfully, uh, to you by our residents. On a regular basis, I work with my fellow selectmen, Mark and Barbara, uh, in Washington and Roxbury. And yes, Bridgewater is the smallest one in this triumvirate. Uh, we have a little less than 20% of the students, which means we pay a little less than 20% of the costs. And the budget is 21 and a half million, and that goes up and down every year according to the numbers. And I think people, everybody understands that's how it works. We're all working together and share ideas of bringing families into the region. And Bridgewater is going through a rejuvenation in the downtown, and we're trying hard to do that. And we have videos and brochures and have met with realtors and all these things to bring families in. This is not going to help. It's not going to help now, and it's not going to help new families to move in. I think, in effect, it's going to drive people away and drive people out. And that's why, you know, the analogy of a lighthouse is probably a good one, because that warns people to stay away from a hazard, which I think this will be. It's not fair. It's not parity. It's not in the regional plan. It could be challenged. It's going to cause a lot of turmoil when you don't want turmoil. We all supported AgSTEM. We got the consolidation issue settled so that all three towns felt like we were stable. And now we get a curveball. This doesn't look good in the press. It's not going to look good to people who were supposedly about to fund AgSTEM at the state level when there's a $900 million deficit. It doesn't look good. It's not going to look good if people take legal action. Nobody wants that. But you're hitting up against that if you proceed, and I think that that would be very detrimental. And the Board's heard a lot of good reasons to not do this tonight, and I hope that you consider some better options. Thank you.
Sir?
My name's Bern Warner. I'm from Bridgewater. I have three, um, students in the region, and I'd just like to say, my son spoke, and as he mentioned, please afford his younger brothers the education that not only he had, but all the other, um, K through five students have in the region. I think combining second and third doesn't make sense to me. I think there's other options, you know? Obviously, supposedly, a letter came out. I did not see one in my son's backpacks or anything. But if that is an option for people to move, consider redistricting something. I mean, we have kind of arbitrary lines. I understand there's towns, and they have their region in their area, but we're a regional school system, so why don't we use the region to get students into the classrooms in the appropriate schools, whether, you know, you take some people from Roxbury potentially and put them in there, into, um, Burnham, or some people close to Washington. I don't know the exact demographics and how they overlap, but consider redistricting or some other option. Again, as people have mentioned, the pendulum swings. Populations change in one town or another, so it can happen to another town, and you're going to be in that situation. It's just all work together. The bottom line is education for our kids. You know what? I understand you guys mentioned, you know, bringing people into the town. Yeah, that's going to help, but bottom line is, your responsibility is for the education of the children of this region. So, please consider your choices and other options as opposed to combining second and third grade. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Paula Conway from Roxbury. I don't know a lot about the multi-grade classrooms. It's very different from the education I received as a child, so I thank you for the presentation. I think that was helpful, and I look forward to hearing about more information. One of the reasons I fought so hard for consolidation two years ago, because I wanted all of our children to be in diverse, yet balanced, classes. Knowing what the numbers were at the time and looking ahead in the near future, I knew that diversity and balance will be difficult to achieve without consolidation. That's why we're here today. Emily Hibbard, who unfortunately is not here, and I attended an informational session about consolidation at the Roxbury Senior Center, and at the end of the meeting, Emily stated, "You have the right to vote however you choose, but if consolidation fails, Booth Free will soon be a two-room schoolhouse." An elderly resident responded by saying, "Well, that's not such a bad thing." And many in the room agreed with her. So unfortunately, consolidation did not pass. The majority of people voted to keep a K-five school in each of their towns despite knowing that multi-grade classrooms were likely to occur. Moving forward, we have to respect that vote. I personally have to respect that vote, knowing that there is a strong possibility that my daughter might be in a merged K-1 class in Booth two years from now. This should not be a surprise to anyone. Right now, you're saying you're doing a favor to Booth and to Washington Primary by keeping the grades separate? You're not. The favor would have been to vote for consolidation two years ago. That's what, that's what would have solved this problem right now. The administration and the Board of Education have been faced with the challenge of meeting the educational needs of our students while being fiscally responsible doing so under less-than-ideal circumstances. In my opinion, they have done an outstanding job. I'm amazed by all the wonderful things our teachers and students are doing on a daily basis. It's time to stop holding the administration and Board of Education responsible for declining enrollment in our schools. They are doing their part. Carolyn, you stood here at this podium two years ago and very confidently said in regards to consolidation, "When this fails," and it will, "I know of six or seven families that will be moving into Bridgewater." Where are those families? The next excuse for why families weren't moving into Bridgewater was because Chapag was a mediocre high school and could not compare to the schools that surround us. Well, the results of the S-PAC certainly stayed otherwise. Then it's we can't attract working families because the region does not have an aftercare program. I appreciate your work, your hard work in trying to attract families to your town by starting the ACE program. Each town should be making similar efforts, whether it's in regards to an aftercare program, recreation, housing, um, or promotion, advertising about your town. Now, the reason why families aren't moving to Bridgewater is because of the merged grades. Early on, the feedback from the families that have gone through the K-1 merged grades was that it was a success, large in part because of the specific teachers that were placed in that class. I have no doubt that this administration will continue to put highly qualified teachers in that second and third grade merged class to meet the educational needs for those children. I think, Bridgewater, you can't keep asking the Board of Education to figure out how to put more kids in your school when your other efforts have failed. We are all in the same boat. None of, none of our schools are at full capacity. We're all trying to attract families to our town. And this negative, negative, continued negativity against Dr. Cosentino, against the Board of Education, hurts our entire region and ends up hurting your town and school even more. The proposed budget is, to me, a good budget. It's fiscally responsible. It's educationally sound. I'm, I'm personally excited about the addition of the enrichment teacher to teach the STEM classes, um, at the, at the elementary school level. A couple of points I wanted to just make that, from the comments, um, in regards to the seven students in that one class in Booth, and the Board and Dr. Cosentino can expand on this. I'm guessing that that class has not been merged, because when you look at the three grades behind it, they all have 12 to 14 kids in that class. So, I'm guessing that to merge that one grade with the, the 10 that are in the class above it, um, and then have to separate those classes for the three years after it, it's a lot of work. It doesn't make sense. And I think that there's, and probably Kathy can kind of expand on that, I'm guessing that there's ways that they, um, increase the socialization for those students. Next, Jeremy, you had made a comment about, um, the population changes, and you definitely are a fantastic guy, is principal at Cornwall School, and he didn't say anything, but, um, he would be an excellent resource for you guys to look into, because, um, Cornwall School, he said, currently has a merged one, two. I think he said they have a three, four merge, or they're looking into it, and down the road, they might be merging K-1 and two together. Talking about parity in the region, and Region One works a little bit differently than this region, um, but their, you know, Region One, I believe, is made up of seven towns. Um, each have their own separate Board of Ed. It's a little bit different than our region, but, um, their school, for instance, has merged grades. Sharon School, where my husband used to teach, does not. They all end up at the, at the high school together. So, they would be an excellent resource to use to see, are their students benefiting, not benefiting, being hurt by these merged classes? So, in the end, I support this budget. I thank you all for your work on it, um, and I'll be encouraging my neighbors and friends to support it as well in the spring. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Ken Schultz. I, uh, am a Washington resident, and I am the Washington Primary School PTO president. And I do not pretend to know if the merged, uh, grades would be successful or if it would not be successful, but I do find it interesting that everyone is surprised in Bridge, in Bridgewater. There is no secret that there is declining enrollment, and you have very few students. I almost look at this as a state of emergency. No one should be surprised that this has come up. In fact, are you, you could shift students from Washington to Bridgewater to Roxbury. You're putting on a, you're putting a Band-Aid on an artery that is bleeding out. I wouldn't be surprised, and again, I'm just guessing, in a few years, might be talking about closing Burnham. There should be no surprise. This is how it's been trending. Uh, kind of piggyback Paula, consolidation could have prevented all this, but I respect the vote. It was voted down. It is what it is. And then you have to come up with an alternative, and I'm not sure what that was, and it hasn't worked. So, I think you might have an affordable housing problem. Uh, I'm also, I'm a realtor. Um, it's what I do in my day job. You know, you guys have a perception of being a seasonal community. That's not a great perception to have when you're trying to get people to put their roots in. But, you know, I don't want to take up too much time, and just by saying, I don't think anyone should be surprised. I am scared for the Bridgewater and the Burnham school, because I don't see anyone recognizing you guys are in trouble and have been for a while. So, whatever happens here tonight with the, the merge, it, it, whatever happens, happens, but the train has left the station, and I'm scared for where it might end up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Apologize. This is very difficult for me, okay?
Excuse me, ma'am. Could you just tell us your name and your town?
Deirdre, uh, Deirdre Daly. I live in Roxbury. I came to Roxbury in 2009. As you can see, I have lots of notes here. Okay? It's a mess. I came to Roxbury. It's, it's a great town. It's small. It's what we want in Bridgewater, Washington, Roxbury. We all like to protect what we have, but it's getting harder and harder, because we don't seem to want to change. We can't sustain the schools the way they are. Like Paul was saying, we fought real hard to consolidate, okay? It was voted down, so now what do we do? We can't keep hiring a superintendent and having people spend hours and hours on, on the Board of Ed trying to come up with solutions, and every time they do, we just, no, that's no good. Go start again. Okay? This is hard. If I was in Bridgewater, I wouldn't want to be there. I'm in Roxbury. In a few years, I'm going to be sitting in your shoes. I have a four-year-old who is in Reach, her second year. Awesome program. Dr. Cosentino, thank you. My other daughter did a year in Reach, and she's in Booth. She's excellent. She's at the top of the class. Small class, I think there's 12 of us, but still, she's doing great. I look forward to her time in Region 12. I don't plan on pulling my child out of high school, okay, and sending her out of district. I, I find it offensive that we have leaders telling us what we should do with our schools, yet they're pulling their own children out and putting them out of their district or putting them into private schools. Let's listen to the parents who actually have kids, who actually want to invest their children into our schools. Let's work together. What do we do with this two, three? I attended the PTO meeting the other night, okay? I got to tell you, at first glance, I'm against it. I don't want it for my own children. I'm worried about that. I don't want it for my town, okay? But I also get where the school is coming from. I get where the Board is coming from, and Dr. Cosentino. They've tried. I've, after, I went to that meeting, I researched multi-grade schools. I couldn't find anything positive nor negative. The only common thread I found was across the board, parents are against it. Okay, I get that. The fact that there's not more positive kind of makes me a little leery of it. So, I understand where Bridgewater is coming from. If it comes to Booth, I'm going to want to put my child in Washington, but then again, I voted for consolidation, okay? I'm ready to make that step. Am I ready to go to Burnham? No. Sorry. Nice people, some of the kids, I really like the kids that play with my kids in Reach. Um, I would have preferred we all stay together in Washington, then separate, but I'm not about to take my kids from Washington, Booth, Burnham, Washington Middle, then high school. That's not good for kids either. We really need to think about the future and make a move. And if this is the move we've got to make now, let's figure out how to make it the best for your children. Let's make sure that Dr. Cosentino hears your concerns and gives your kids the extra attention that they need. If we could get around it somehow, great. If they have an alternative plan to this, to give you another year to figure out what you're going to do the following year, great. I'm all for it. I'm kind of neutral on this, but at the end of listening to the people that have been involved, all the parents going through it, I have to say, you know what? At some point, we have to listen to them. We hired Dr. Cosentino. We... We've allowed people to be on the Board volunteering on our behalf. At what point do we say, you know what, they know better than we do? We have to. There's no other alternative. I listened to the comments about the teachers' Gucci lounge. Come on. I haven't even been in that space, but the comments I heard left me totally, with a totally different opinion than what it is. Come on. Who in this room has not renovated their house since 1979? Really? How many kitchens have I renovated in that time? Several. Who, who in this room would go to work and expect to be stuffed in a, in a room that's from 1979? I assure you, not one of you. It's not a lunch lounge. It's a working lounge for the teachers, for the children, ultimately for all of us. Because you know what? If we don't invest in our children, all of us suffer. We have to invest in the children. The children are our future. And I know you all care about your children. That's why you're here. That's why you're not with your children right now. You want the best for their future. Can we do it for less than $250,000? I'm sure we can, okay? Eight thousand square feet, I could tell you maybe the painting could be done a little bit less, probably not much, I could tell you that, because I've dealt with construction and stuff. But I'm sure here and there. One of the things I've learned about the Board of Ed and their budgets by talking to people is sometimes they have to go a little higher. They have a fiscal responsibility to not come short in their budget, okay? So work with them. The Spanish teacher being cut, I'm not too thrilled with that. I understand part of the reason being that you're finding that kids going, moving on are not really getting much of a benefit or it's not showing up in their later years, so you feel it's not proper to cut it, to have them start earlier. I beg to differ. I travel internationally, very pro-American, I manufacture in the United States. The one thing I find around the world that Europeans, Asians do better than us is they're multilingual. They know their native language and English is a second language. Our children need to have multiple language exposure early on so they're more competitive in life. They needed to get into colleges, they needed to, for business. So instead of cutting, I think we should look, and maybe it's not now, maybe it's in the future, but we really do need to start learning, having our kids learn German, not so much Italian, but German, Chinese even, you know? We need more languages. The busing, someone mentioned about Sherman. Not too thrilled about that either, okay? Roxbury parents were not able to get a bus from Reach to Children's Station. We have an established licensed facility who provides before and after-school care and during for kids that go, don't go to school. That facility is open during inclement weather and days that schools are shut down. For parents like me that had Reach children that work full-time and travel, I wanted to have my child go to Reach and then go to Children's Station. I was not able to. Washington parents who had no childcare were not able to have their kids go to Reach. Something that nobody's talking about, there's this Bridgewater ACE Program. And I've spoken with Carolyn, who happens to be the founder, I've spoken with several other people about it because it's one of those things that can't, it's flying under the radar. And while we talk about what's fair for Bridgewater, should be fair for Roxbury, let's talk about it, okay? It's not fair. We have a Roxbury resident who's a pillar of the community. She gives her time to Roxbury schools. She gives her time to the town itself. She, she's a good person. She's a family member. She's a friend. She's a neighbor. She pays taxes to our town. She employs people. I'm sure she would have an enrichment program given the chance. I don't agree with paying for a bus from Booth to Burnham for any reason. I don't care what the underlying reason is, and I've, I've heard different stories on it. I do not agree to it, okay? It's not fair. I think it hurts Roxbury. It hurts that business. It hurts the person. I also don't agree aligning Region 12 with a program that's not properly insured, licensed, and staffed. I think that will cost us a lot more in the long run than this so-called Gucci lounge that people have talked about, okay? So while people are throwing around threats of lawsuits and one hand saying we all got to get along and the other hand, well, if you don't get along or you don't do what I tell you to and fall in line, I say to all of you, let's work on getting people into our town. Let's start getting along, trying to figure out what the real answer to the problem is. Let's stop trying to take kids from one town or another to fix our problem. You need to build up the first-time homeowner base in your towns. You need to bring families into your towns. It won't happen if you keep saying the things you're saying about Roxbury or Washington or the Board or school. It's not going to happen. I wouldn't have moved here if I knew this was going on. You heard it from another parent. We would not be here. And if we don't come here, you will be, and I told you guys at the PTO meeting, you will be like Reader's Digest. Your customer base is literally dying. So you really need to think about what you're doing, what you're saying, and how you're going to fix the problem. Don't look for us to pay for it. Don't look for us to suffer for it. Our children are already being hurt. The classes are too small. So that's it. But thank you to the Board and good luck.
I'm Laney Flanagan and I'm a resident of Bridgewater. I'm the Director of the Aftercare Program at the Bridgewater School, and I want to thank the Board for considering providing a bus from Booth to Burnham for the next school year so that we are able to offer to Booth families the program that we have at Burnham. The program has never been exclusive to Bridgewater. It has been always for families in the area to meet their childcare needs, add some enrichment to their lives, help them with homework, collaborate with ASAP and library programs so that working families, children can go to those programs and then have care until six, seven AM.
I'm sorry.
I am well aware of the fact that a for-profit organization has existed for a long time in Roxbury, providing quality child care to members of the community. It is no secret that there are buses that arrive with children from the Reach program and our elementary schools at that location. So our request to have a bus, I think, is in line with what has been going on. It should also be noted that we are a not-for-profit. We are administered by the Rec Commission and the Town of Bridgewater. We are well insured. This program did not start without Pat Cosentino making sure that Region 12 was protected from an insurance perspective, as well as the Town of Bridgewater, the PTO, and anybody involved with the program. I am a elementary school teacher. The other person that works with me is a paraprofessional who's been vetted and trained by this district. I have met with people in Washington to help them establish a similar program. It was, it is our intent and has been from the very beginning to have an aftercare program at a local elementary school, to be a model for other elementary schools to draw new families to the region. We have, I, I personally, we have worked from day one to work with others. I, I had always said I'm here to help anyone establish this program, wherever they need to establish it. So as a resident of the area who has children beyond school age, I've been really excited about what I've seen going on. I was very excited that I saw three communities come together to support the AgSTEM program. And I have felt only supported in starting the ACE program. And as we've talked about it, these are bookend programs. These are things to say, we are meeting the needs of our youngest children to our oldest children. We're meeting them in all three towns, and I hope that we can continue to work together. I do think it is a really exciting time for our communities. I do think we have some, some budget, some tough budget issues to, to face, and I'm confident that we can do it together. So thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else? Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one else, and thank you all for your comments. I appreciate them very much. All right, at this time, we'll move on to Item 4 on our agenda, which is Discussion of the Proposed 2016-17 Budget. Michelle, I, I may have said before you arrived that I had asked you to take the Board through the budget with assistance from Tony, as you may need it, or Tony's comments, so would you please do that? It is almost 9:30, but I'm sure we can get through this. Does the Board need a break? Peter?
What? I have a question. I've stated earlier. I've stated earlier in the meeting, just how long do you intend for us to sit here?
Well, let me-
I don't mean that in a negative-
I understand. Michelle, do you have any, anticipate how long this might take?
That's really dependent upon the comment. Well, I guess, I hate this thing. I guess I would just reiterate what you said is that we don't have to come to a decision tonight so we can start the conversation and get as far as we get, and we have a meeting on Monday and we can continue. So there's, there's no, there's, I don't think we should rush, but I, I think we should probably at least start. How's that?
Board okay with starting? See where we go? Let's say, Peter, I'd like not to go past 10 o'clock. I mean, it's 25 after 9. The thing is, we have another meeting on Monday, right, Monday?
Yes, we do.
It's an education meeting. There is discussion on the budget on the agenda. We'll have another public comment, you know? I don't know how long that might last. So I would like to get through a review of the budget, but if we can't get it done tonight, you know, we'll have to do it and we'll start it again. So let's get at least started. Is that all right?
Yeah, I have some, there were comments-
There were comments made tonight. I have some questions, so I don't know how they would evolve in the discussion of the budget or where we would put them, relevant to what people said. I don't know. How do you want to handle it?
I'd like to have us, Michelle, take us through the budget. Then we'll have an opportunity, the Board will have a full opportunity for discussion to say whatever it wants. That may not be tonight, okay? Go ahead. Unless, do people need five minutes? Break?
Yeah, it could be a good idea.
All right. We'll take five minutes. We'll reconvene at 9:30.
Okay.
Me too.
You know what? I didn't bring food. I didn't think it was gonna-
How long are you gonna be in the bathroom?
No, he wants food. I'm good.
Who's her? Who's he?
Exhausting.
It is, and this, this is-
It could have been far worse.
This is the 3, 4.
Whatever this deal is, it's not worth it or necessary.
I don't know.
And I'll bring it with me on also Wednesday. Good. Excellent. Do me a favor. Okay.
When I was talking with Pat about the budget, I was trying to bring up where's that conversation gonna come out? Because we need to have the input.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know. We will.
Okay.
No, let's not move.
I just gave away my numbers. You have them though if I have to.
All right, can we get, can we get started, please? All right. I want to assure the Board that we'll have a full conversation with the Board, between the Board, about the budget, but I just think there's some value in us just going through the budget so we understand what the numbers are and then we can start that. Either tonight, I had said we'll end at 10, but you know, it's up to the Board, or we can do it at our next meeting. All right, Michelle, did you? Thank you.
All right. Does everyone have their budgets out? What we usually do is go through, through each of the sections of the budget, okay? Hopefully you all had a chance to review it after Dr. Cosentino's presentation last week. I just want to point out, because it's true for every category, that all of the project improvements, the big changes that are the things that we probably really want to talk about, are at the end in the program improvement page. So it should, the rest of the category should be pretty straightforward. It's mostly business as usual. There might be a few areas where there's some change, and we can definitely ask questions about those areas. But if you're looking for staffing changes or program changes that we've been discussing, those will be at the end, so just clarify that. So if everyone wants to, go ahead and turn to the 100s page, page 3. That's where we'll start. Personnel services, this is the salaries for all of our staff. And as you will see, looking down at the column here, this is staffing as it is moving forward, so this does not reflect the changes that you're, that we have been talking about. It's noted up top that, that the increase that you're seeing, the 2.79% increase, is due mostly to the teacher contract. We have other staff on this, you know, all the staff is included here, but the teachers are on a 3% increase. So that is the majority of that. Does anyone have questions?
There was a question tonight about tutors. What's the tutors line change? It looks like it's a, it's a very even $50,000 addition, so that must-
Alan, why don't you turn your microphone?
There was a question tonight about tutors, and so my question's about the tutors line. It looks like there's a very even $50,000 increase, which must have to do with some kind of problematic decision or necessity.
Bob, answer. Sometimes he has better-
It's actually about a $40,000 change, and what happens in that line is part of it's offset by grants from the federal government, which have decreased from what they were before. So it reflects that decrease that we, we ended up with coming out of the title grants. So prior to that, we had more money coming from the federal government by way of the state. It's been diminished a little bit, and that's why the increase in that line. No, no real change in people.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, so are these are all actually negotiated increases?
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, I was just going to point out that when you get to the next page, you're going to see that there's a decrease in the cost of employee benefits, including medical. And so the increase in salary was offset by a decrease in those benefits. The actual net increase on personnel costs is not as high as this looks. It's about a little bit, little bit more than half of this. So, and that was because we obtained, in addition to the increases, in addition to the increases, we obtained some, some concessions on the benefit programs. And, and the teachers actually ended up in a better position in terms of their total take-home after the benefit adjustments, but we saved a significant amount of money. So the, the net effect is actually less than this looks, and that was all bargained for in negotiations.
Thank you. Any other questions for the 100s? All right. Well, yep, Greg just covered the 200s pretty much, so unless there are any further questions on the 200s? Nope? All right. 300s, purchased professional and technical services. You'll see that this- Greg just covered the 200s pretty much, so unless there are any further questions on the 200s? Nope? All right. 300s, purchased professional and technical services. You'll see that this, this category is down 12.9%. It's described pretty well up top what this is, you know, the decreases are for. If you look at 330, that line, and the detail, I believe, is on page four of 13, but we, because we are moving expenses that we incurred for getting the AgSTEM program off the ground, those will move into the bonding. So, we, that category decreased by about $90,000. I think, and which is the largest part of that change?
There was two things, and there was also, the second part of that was, I'm green, but my voice isn't good. The second part of that was a reduction for the Anne Baldwin, which-
Oh, right. The PR media.
There's two lines, is all I'm pointing out.
Okay. Great. Does anyone have questions on the 300s? Okay. 400s, purchased property services. You'll see that this has an increase of 2.66%. Most of that increase can be found in the grounds upkeep. That was explained pretty well in the introduction with the, the state shifting to the pest management control. It's made, anyway, it's made it, without being able to use the chemicals, it makes it hard to take care of the grass. So, it's a little more labor-intensive. But it's not, it's an increase of $11,000, so it's not, it's not a large increase to the budget there. Any other questions? If you're looking for the detail, page five of 13, if you want to see the breakout for some of the grounds upkeep. Peter?
I just want to go back to 330 for a second. I was just-
Sure.
What, I had asked Bob a while back, what we, what are we paying an hour for legal services? Every firm has a per hourly ballpark mean.
It was 3, it was 315, I think, is the discounted rate that we're paying.
Okay. Yeah, that's pretty, that's about the average, yeah, that's the average around the state.
Several people involved.
Yeah, okay. That's fine. That's the average. I had heard 400, but I-
No.
No.
Okay.
All right. All right. I believe we're on 500s now. Other purchased services. This category in total is up 5.83%. If you look down at the detail, a majority of that is, are in the two categories of 561 and 5634, special education, tuition, and private placements.
And transportation up on top.
And then transportation, yeah, that went up a little bit.
That was, transportation was contractual.
Other than that, one vehicle that we only added an hour to, less than an hour, going
between Booth and Burnham, which is on page nine, all the rest of it is contractual in nature.
Okay. So, that's, that's good to understand. If you're looking for the detail, it's on page seven of 13. You can look and see exactly what went up, actually 560 as well. We had more students going to Nanawog this year, so that tuition went up, as well as some of the special needs that we had this year.
If I may, without looking at the detail, Bob, can you tell us the number, the projected increase in the number of students on line 561?
Uh, five-
And 563?
Those are, there's actually one student additional in there from the year before. It's just how they're programmed, because they all have individual instruction, and the number of days related to it. But there's one new student.
What, do you know the total number of students?
We have, Ally is here.
Ah, Ally.
Oh, here, Ally, yeah.
I didn't know if she was still-
Ally, will you come up for a second? We have some questions for you, please.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. That's why they're here. They're just-
There you go. I didn't see that.
Because everything was-
Look back there.
61 and 63. Ally, I'm sorry. I just was wondering that, the tuition, special education, other public schools, and tuition, special education, in-state, private, and agency play schools. Do you have an idea of the number of students we're talking about?
I don't, I didn't bring my budget numbers with me. I have it in, in the data that, that goes along with that. I'd have to go back to the office and look. The public has gone up. I pay tuition, on top of the tuition that we pay to Nanawog for just students' entrance into Nanawog, I pay additional funds for special education students that are there. So, there are some additional funds that are put into the budget this year, because the rates have gone up dramatically. So, I know there's an additional 50-plus thousand in that line, public line this year, because of Nanawog tuitions, beyond the special needs tuitions. I don't have the numbers exactly off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
We can bring it Monday night.
I can get it. Yeah, it's easy enough.
And the one student that's-
There's an additional student that we just recently-
The last minute.
Were, were notified that is in a, in a DCF placement, and now we've become responsible for the student in another town. And we're paying tuition to that, for that student to be in that town, along with the support, special education supports the student needs. So, that was an additional expense that we did not expect either.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Yep. All right. No, yes, Pete?
Is Sherman in these figures somewhere?
No. Sherman students are in the revenue.
The busing, I mean, is the busing in this?
No.
Okay.
The tuition that we receive from Sherman is netted with the bus. So, you'll see the number in the revenue item, on the revenue page, of tuition kids coming in from Sherman.
Right. But what you're telling me is that you are deducting the cost of the busing.
That's the way the contract is written, right? They pay the tuition to us, and at the same time, reduce it by the fixed cost of that one bus.
I have a question about this, and the reason I did it, because I was on the board when we tuitioned in Sherman originally, and they paid for the bus. That's the way we did it. And I guess at some point, either they made an issue of the bus, either we're not gonna send you students, or we want a reduction somewhere. But they are paying a very good tuition. What's the tuition? What are we tuitioning Sherman in at? About $11,000, I would say?
No. They're actually coming in here at, let me just grab that page, Peter. They're coming in at $12,276.
Okay.
And the rationale that happened with the bus was the, tried to encourage the kids in Sherman to attend here.
I understand that.
It was a decision made to put and pay for that bus to get the kids back and forth-
Right.
With the idea that you would get more students.
Right. I know. I've listened. Okay. I mean, it's not an issue with me, but it certainly would concern me when we get into the proposal that we're hoping to do with the Ag program, and that we wind up in the same situation, you know? That's, I mean, I'm not bringing it up right now, but that is a concern, that the board made a decision to encourage students to come in from Sherman and their administration, administrative personnel by selling the fact that, look, we'll pay for the busing. You're paying us tuition, and we'll deduct that, and we're still doing okay. So, I understand that as a selling point. But I would be concerned, in the future, if that issue were to come up with what we're about to do in the near future.
Just to follow up on Mr. Tagg's point. So, Bob, are you-
Mike, Michael, you need your mic on.
Your mic. Mic, mic.
Loud. So, what you're saying is that after the students pay their, or the town of Sherman pays the students' tuition, and then we subtract out the cost of the bus, there's still a positive revenue flow for Region 12?
Yeah. It's detailed on page 11 of the budget. You'll see a line called revenue, and it's tuition non-residents. There's one student outside of the Sherman family alcolate. And this year, because of more enrolled students, that's the reason the tuition in general went up, because more students are choosing to attend here. So, the revenue goes up. The revenue, in turn, offsets the net budget to the towns.
That's a, that's an important point, because, you know, one of the facts that we want to get out then is that, you know, attracting Sherman students here more than pays for itself. It's actually a net gain for the district, not a loss. But thank you.
I just wanted to add to that, that there was a point when Sherman was responsible for the bus, and their school board felt the need to cut that, and parents were, by us guaranteeing the busing, parents felt-
Right.
The confidence to come. They wouldn't, they weren't afraid that year to year, they had to go and fight for that bus at Sherman, because they knew it was in our best interest. So, actually, our first three selectmen asked us to put that back in the budget, because it was, it guaranteed some attendance. Greg?
I was just gonna say that, don't forget that every, once you're providing the bus, every other Sherman student could come as a result of having that bus. That's pure, to the bottom line, gravy. Because until you get to the point where you need a second bus, you know, it's all gravy. So, I think we're now, this year, I think we're, what, 22 students?
We'll be up to 30.
30?
30 next year.
And next year, you're going up to 30.
Next, next year, you're going up to 30. So, the net effect there is, is really positive, because every other additional student's another $12,257, whatever it was, added on to it. So, it's very, it becomes very paying, even though the bus is in there. Now, I'm not suggesting that we want to do the same thing in other areas. This is a special case, because it's a town. Now, the other interesting thing is, is because you've got that bus coming here, that raises an interesting question vis-à-vis the AgSTEM program, because are they ending up paying for that bus or not? I mean, that may be the one situation in which, unless they send an awful lot of AgSTEM people and create a second bus, I think we're, I think your point, Pete, is well-taken there, because we're paying for that bus. And I, that's gonna be an interesting-
Can we move beyond that?
I was gonna say, I mean, without getting into the AgSTEM program, each, each AgSTEM or sending is gonna, is gonna bring with it 10,000 per head. Right now, they're coming in with 12, 12,2. So, you know, we gotta think through before we start making demands or asking for what we want, because, you know, just, again, not doing any deep thinking here, you might as well just not say anything, let them attend at the 12.3 to the AgSTEM program, and those kids will be bringing in more money than anybody else in the AgSTEM program, on a per-child basis. So, I, so if that were to hold true, I'd pay for the bus. Right? In fact, I'd get a bigger bus.
Yeah, it'd be a pain in the neck, but I, Michelle, did I hear you say that what Sherman said was, they weren't gonna send students if we didn't pay for the bus? Is that what I heard?
No, I think what happened is, at one of their school board meetings, the funding for that bus was in question. It made the parents nervous. They didn't want to start their child in ninth grade, and then all of a sudden have the bus disappear in 10th grade and have to switch their schools. So, that concern was enough to, to move the cost of that bus to Region 12. Because I, I don't know if they actually ever defunded it, but there was talk of defunding it. Bob, do you remember?
Right. That's exactly, they were concerned about it, and the board decided to try to stabilize the population coming in. We would offset the revenue with that bus, so there was no impact on the general fund budget. It was just in the revenue line.
So, therefore, my concern is, when you have schools sending us students for whatever program it is-
That's gonna be different, Peter.
In what sense? In other words, if, if, if we can grant busing privileges to a school system that we took in many years ago-
They, they were-
What's to say we can't grant the same privileges?
You could. You could do whatever you like, as a board, but the reality is, this is a different scenario in the sense that these were, I'm gonna call them mainstream students, not Ag students. Now, you're getting into a new realm, a new, a new thing.
Okay, so-
And students, the sending district is responsible for that treatment.
This is my concern to the superintendent, that once you build a program, that, that is a contractual security for us.
It's part of the state program that you provide your own busing.
That's right.
All of the schools currently now pay for their own busing to get their students to Nanawog.
Like we do.
Like we do. And they, when they come to us, they will pay for their own busing. Sherman is different, because it's a contract between the two towns for a special situation of kids, because they don't have a high school.
So, I'm not complaining that you couldn't work a deal out with somebody if it came to that, push to shove or something. I'm just concerned that we start off with the concept that we know we're not gonna wind up-
The other thing is that I would never go make any legal contract with anyone without going to the board and consulting our attorney.
No, we understand.
Okay.
And these sending schools are already paying that bus anyway. It's just where it's gonna land.
Greg, did you want to add to that?
Well, I was just gonna say, if every one of the sending towns wants to send 30 non-Ag students, 30 non-Ag student kids to us at 12 grand a pop, I'd be happy to pay for a bus for each one of those towns. I mean, you know, it's 300 and change.
All right. Thank you.
But that's not an official offer, so for-
All right. I believe that is the end of the 500s. We can move on to the 600s, supplies. If you look down to the bottom, you'll see the, there's a decrease in this category by 5.38%. If you look, there are a couple of areas, 624, fuel, heating, oil, down close to $30,000, I think it is, because we were able to lock in a lower rate. Thank you very much, Bob. And that's a nice savings. We also have savings up in educational instructional supplies. The details of this category on page eight of 13, if anyone has specific questions. Yes?
Is the increase in the textbook line specific to, or is it just a cyclical issue?
May I speak?
Yeah.
It is the math textbooks for the middle school. We need to get new math textbooks based on the Common Core state standards, and it's time. So, that's where, I want to say almost $20,000 came from.
Thank you.
Have a question?
Yes.
Explain to me the relevance in the future of the computers that we're buying these students that are used on their desks, or used as textbooks. Is that being done, are, are textbooks being actually done by computer?
Well, there's a couple of different things. First of all, yes. When we can get textbooks on the computer, we do. But you still pay for them.
I understand.
Okay? And it's very similar to the cost of what the textbook was.
Right.
Maybe a little bit cheaper, but it's, it's not a big savings. Although we live in a digital world, there are a lot of students who like the textbook. They still feel good about holding it and underline, and all of that kind of stuff. So, it's kind of like, I think we're now in a transition. We have both. You know, math, a math textbook is, is something that, that's good. It's harder to do that on a computer in some ways, because you have the questions and stuff, and unless you're gonna do it, you know, a lot of the textbooks have a supplement that you can use on the computer.
But what does it, what does a textbook look like by a student who's been using a textbook for a year or two, as compared to having a computer with the textbook on it? I mean, are you buying, does a textbook last three, four, five years?
Oh, sure. Textbook has a long life.
That's okay.
And it gets, you know, we collect the textbooks.
Right.
As well as, each year, we buy licenses for the different programs we use-
Okay.
On the computers, and then we have to buy another license for the amount of kids that use it.
Okay.
There's a lot of copyright laws that you have to follow. So it's kinda like, I think we're now in a transition. We have both. You know, math, a math textbook is something that's good. It's harder to do that on a computer in some ways because you have the questions and stuff and unless you're gonna do it, you know, a lot of the textbooks have a supplement that you can use on the computer.
But what does a textbook look like by a student who's been using a textbook for a year or two as compared to having a computer with the textbook on it? I mean, are you buying... Does a textbook last three, four, five years?
Oh, sure. Textbook has a long life.
That's okay.
And it gets, you know, we collect the textbooks.
Right.
As well as each year, we buy licenses for the different programs we use on the computers. And then we have to buy another license for the amount of kids that use it. There's a lot of copyright laws that you have to follow. You know, I think... I don't know if Teresa's here, if she wants to add anything.
You're very accurate.
Yes.
A textbook doesn't mean a tangible textbook, but a student can't flip back and forth, looking and researching information on the computer like they can in a textbook or in a multi-page chat.
I was looking for a saving primarily.
I know you're looking for savings. That's not where you're gonna find it really at this point.
Just a quick question. Are the textbook subscriptions annuals? You know, so you have to re-up them every year? Or do you buy them like for three-year with updates and upgrades in those three years?
Six years or online?
Six years. And inside those six years, you're entitled to upgrades or edits or...
There are any typically...
To the extent there are.
Greg?
One area that the facilities hopes to... Facilities Committee hopes to actually reduce costs in this category is in electricity. And it's one of the reasons why we are continuing to work with Eversource to... On both the new school buildings we're gonna be building and the existing buildings in switching over to more and more LED lighting. And I think you're... And you're gonna see us come from time to time, come in with projects under the 1% capital fund and others that are going to start replacing the lighting. You see in this room and all throughout the hallways with LED lights. And that really cuts our electricity usage for lighting in half or better. And so that would be the idea, that we would eventually start to see a long-term reduction in the cost of electricity if that happens.
I have another question.
Yep, Pete?
Solar. We're certainly in a really great place for a solar adaption. I mean, I'm not big into solar, but it's everywhere you see. They're talking about the percentage of energy that we're gonna create over the course of the next 20 years. What is the possibility of really availing ourselves to solar for electricity? At least looking into it or doing something to the facility?
Well, we are, actually. We're looking into that in connection with the new high school building. But the difficulty becomes that the upfront cost of installing it is steep. It's a steep curve. And the question is, does it last long enough that you're able to reap sufficient benefits? That you're not just simply... Now, you've got to the point where you're breaking even with it or you've paid for it and now you need to replace it. And so we're carefully looking at it, but it's not a panacea quite yet. But, you know, we're keeping it on the docket and we are looking at it.
But you do get grants. I know there were grants and everything that helped you get started. And maybe Bob knows more than any of us on this.
Prior... This goes back probably about six or better years ago. There was a great interest to put solar here because of the expanse of the roof. And I personally had three companies and they did study of the thing and walked away.
Did you?
Never to return. And, you know, it was a combination of things because they needed to make money. And they didn't feel as though they could generate enough to make money. Plus, the age of the roof was a problem for them. Because when you put this up, you really need to do it in concert with a roof project. Otherwise, if you try to put it on a 10-year roof, most companies won't do it.
Well, you know, if you go up 109 in Washington and you look on the left, you get halfway up the hill, there's a huge... I don't know whether it's a house or whoever did it. There's a huge solar panel up that road. I mean, it must be 100 feet wide by 50 feet long or whatever. And that... It doesn't have to be on the roof.
No, it doesn't. But when they looked at this site, given everything that's going on here...
Wasn't viable.
Not really. I mean, you've got a lot of activity and you're taking up real estate on the outside of the building. At least, that's what they claim.
You're just trying to save a buck, that's all.
When they're doing this, they're trying to generate more money than the facility or more electricity than the facility utilizes, okay? And once you get something this big, it takes a big array to make it happen so they could sell it back to Eversource in this case. Back then, it was Connecticut Light and Power. They have the dynamics of it. And it just... Why it didn't work for them was partly the roof age up here and partly they did say they were gonna have a problem trying to break this even. And they're in the business to make money. It was over six years ago, Pete.
Bob, I just wanted to say that we might want to take a look at that again because I know they have new models.
Oh, yeah.
Because we're doing it at our house and the office where there are companies that own the equipment. And so you don't pay anything upfront to put it there. They then sell you back the electricity at a reduced rate. So there are some alternate financing models. And actually, I have an old roof and they said they actually come and remove it. You replace your roof, they put it back on and it's a small fee.
I think once we're doing this project, there's gonna be people involved with it.
Yeah, yeah.
So they'll be looking at it again. It's probably at that point that you would do that.
Yeah. No, that makes sense. Mike?
Alan and I were just talking about this too. And I think to go with the AgSTEM, we need a windmill. If you've been listening to the wind howl above Chapag, I think we'd make... You could probably sell electricity to surrounding, to Washington residents. Power Washington.
I agree. I agree. That would be fantastic.
There you go.
Turbin.
That makes the most sense.
The last thing I was just wanting... Jim wants to move on. Last thing I was just gonna say is that we are going to have a presentation next week. Temple, right? She's still coming?
I don't think it's Joan Temple next week. I think it's...
Okay, in May.
Mrs. Crido, I believe.
Okay, so in May because the conversation about textbooks and online subscriptions came up in our budget meetings. And so she'll be coming to talk a little bit more about how we're using our online subscriptions as it relates to the budget. So those were good questions. All right. With no more questions, moving on to 700, Property and Program Improvements. All right, this is the category where we will see all the changes that have been proposed in the budget. So let's see. I'm not sure how we want to handle this. If you look up in the upper sections here, you'll see a decrease of 28%. This is the... Well, you can read what it's... It's Equipment, Educational, Capital Learning, Capital Technology. You'll see a decrease in Capital Facilities here because it's moved down below over last year's budget. So if you have questions about those, otherwise, we can move down to the 733 Detail. Is everyone ready to do that? Okay, so for 733, Capital Technology, these... Well, I mean, you guys can read as well as I can. If you have questions, we could have Karen talk about those. This is mostly our replacement cycle. So there's nothing on here that is a new program per se. It's just detailing out for you our regular replacement cycle for all of our technology, our computers. Any questions for 733?
I have a question. The last time we discussed this...
The last time we discussed it, I did mention, I think it was two years ago, that the superintendent had a very low-cost budget with a lot of technology for the staff, for the teachers. And I mentioned at that meeting that since the budget was so low, you better pump it all in for the staff or they might not see it again. And my question is regarding this is, when you have a low budget, when you have a low-budget increase, if the staff is lacking in anything, it is certainly the time to try and get whatever in the staff needs or it may not come back again. So my only question is, is what the superintendent placed in here suffice for what the staff needs in its presentation on a daily basis?
I'll have Mrs. Files answer, being that she's standing right there.
Hi. I can honestly tell you that there is nothing. We have a very planned replacement cycle. And we have thought out... The year that you're speaking about where we added all the technology, we planned out our cycle going into the future. So what you're seeing here is actually part of our plan. And so everything that we need is covered.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Oh, yeah, Mike?
Quick question. Thank you. The Chapag teacher room at 250,000 is under Program Improvement Change, 750. Why is it not under 734 Capital Facilities?
I don't know. That's a good question. I'm gonna guess that it's not all considered capital because painting is maintenance.
That's one reason, but it was specifically put in there so you could identify it in one place.
Oh, instead of breaking it up?
Right.
Okay.
Most of these things... There's an element of transparency in this budget where we're not putting these things into these other line items so you can't find them. Page nine articulates all of these things. It was one of the items that came up was the $250,000 for that room. It landed right here so you could see it. That's the only reason. If it wasn't there, it would have been in the Capital Facilities and articulated it there. Only be... But this is new. The Capital Facilities is old stuff going forward. This is a whole brand-new thing. And that's why we put it right where in the Program Improvement. But either way, it's spelled out so you can find it.
Just a follow-up question to... There's a $25,000 line item for the AgriSTEM Advisor. And I'm wondering why that would not be covered under the bonding?
That's not part of a building project, okay? This is... This particular cost is more related, as I understand it, to the curriculum side to ensure that the program gets put in place. It's not like a construction manager or one of those people that are doing the building themselves. It's almost... In fact, if I'm wrong...
And also, an advisor to the Building Committee and the Advisory Committee to make sure that our curriculum and our building needs and our supplies all match and come together.
Is that a one-time fee until the program is up and running? Or is that something we would anticipate having to pay?
No, that would be a one... It would probably be for two years. And then when... Well, I shouldn't say that. Our plans as of now are to have it for one year and then hopefully in next year's budget, hire an agri-science STEM teacher, either a curriculum director, who would do some teaching and the same kind of work. So it really is a one-year thing. If perchance, next year, the board did not want to put in that teacher for whatever reason, then we would still have that stipend for one more year. But once the program was up and running, then that wouldn't be there anymore. Because that would be somebody's job.
Okay.
The other portion of that is to ensure that the equipment that goes into those buildings is... Because that has to still go through the state. And the person that's doing this knows the ins and outs of all of the types of equipment that's needed in Ag program.
Right.
There's nobody here that knows that.
Just to keep following up, I know there hasn't been a new AgSTEM location for many years in the state of Connecticut. But I'm wondering if we go back to the most recent additions, is that the way you've been told from the AgSTEM community, this is really what you need to do and we recommend you have... You hire a consultant for year one and then you'd be folding it in.
Yes, that's exactly. We've been to many, many schools around the state and even in Massachusetts. Different groups of us. We... The visits are very good because you learn what to do and you learn what not to do. And then we have been working with the staff member at Nanawag, who has been very, very helpful, who's also been guiding us because not only is he an agri-science person and an expert, he also runs a program and is very connected to the state and to the national program. So we're really getting some very good advice from him.
I dare say probably some inexpensive advice as well.
Free, if not free.
It's very close to being... If you divide it by the total hours, by the time the year is out, we're getting a bargain.
Thank you.
I hate to prolong... I know I said 10 o'clock. I know what I'm like prolonging. But we heard a lot of complaints about the $250,000 and it's here, correct? It's in that line. I walked through the... I had Don take me through the area. And one of the things I said, you know, nobody presented us a plan, a scenario, a drawing or anything. They just popped the $250,000 on us. And I thought it would be a much better selling point to look at a complete restoration to see, certainly easier to sell, et cetera, et cetera. But it was a big sticking point tonight with many people. So I think we discussed among ourselves how we feel about this. I'm not sure... I'm excited about spending $250,000. I looked at the room. It does need to be modernized as many areas we all know that the school needs and we've been doing. The question is, is there another way to do it incrementally? Does it have to be all done at once? I'd like to hear from other board members, what they're feeling on this issue.
I do just want to let you know that we did put, from Don, a description of the work and the cost in that little packet we gave you.
Okay.
Just so you have it.
Okay.
Yeah, one of the things about that room is there are different ways you could tackle it. I don't think you want to do it incrementally because the first thing you're gonna have to do is you're gonna have to do painting, floors, lights, some of the same things that are done elsewhere, and then furnishing. You can't really do the painting, floor and lights and then not buy the furniture because you'd be putting the same old furniture back in a room that doesn't work. Plus, we're trying to get storage out of it. And so by the time you looked at all these things, you probably ought to tackle it as a project at one discrete time. Whether you want to fund it over a longer period of time and not tackle it, I think you're actually gonna have to build it out all at once. And don't forget, when you put the lighting in there, then you're reducing your long-term overall costs of operating the building if you're going to LED lighting like we've done in the hallways. Also, when you're redoing the floor, you're redoing it with the same kind of resilient flooring that's in the mall. And then effect of that is you're improving air quality standards at the same time and reducing your long-term cost because that material out there tends to last longer than what's in here. So there's a variety of pieces of it. I know people look at it and say, oh gee, you know, you're spending $250,000. Would you rather we spent $250,000 improving the other hallways in the building? I mean, you're gonna... We have to get it into our head that unless we want to go back for bonding increases and more bonds in the future, this building is gonna need probably at least $5 to $8 million invested over the next 10 years. That's gotta be invested year after year after year in our operating budget if we're ever gonna get there. Otherwise, we're gonna have to bond it because at some point in time, you're gonna have issues. But we already know we've got money that has to be spent. So I think the answer... I mean, people always want to say, well, why are you spending that? Well, there's a lot of things we're gonna be spending money on because we cannot own a building and not maintain it. We can't own a building and not bring it into the next generation. And if you're going to make use of this building for the next 40 years, you gotta do things because it's 40 years old and it looks showing its age. And, you know, there's other projects we have to get to. Sometime, walk through the locker rooms and see how nice that looks. I mean, there's a lot of things in this building that need help. And so we have to tackle them. And the problem is, we've spent years kicking the can down the road at every building in this district. And what happens? We then have to invest the money because the buildings don't go away. They just get old.
Alan?
Yeah, I've come around to understanding that spreading it out only will impact and interfere with whatever budget numbers we're looking at next year for next year's project. But there is still, you know, we... This could have been presented better. So, you know, very often, you present, look what we need to do. Look what you're getting and here's the number. The number got first, so everyone's all in an uproar. So with that in mind, is there any way that there... This number... Even moving the dollar out over years is probably not gonna be helpful either. But is there any way of reducing this? And now, what do I know? But instinctively, you know, I had an entire house, about half of that square footage, painted for about $3,500. How is it as much as $20,000 for what is basically a room as opposed to the intricacies of a residential house? Now, as I said, I'm just shooting this out of nowhere, not knowing anything that I'm talking about. But it strikes me as if there's opportunity there, there might be opportunity in a lot of these other line items to reduce this and maybe have this come in at $200,000 instead of $250,000 or something like that.
That's what I was gonna suggest. That's why I was raising my hand.
Don, you wanna come up and speak, please?
I'm sure he doesn't, but he's going to.
You're up.
Alan, while Don's coming up here. You know, certainly, I think the line item, you know, is gonna be scrubbed, is gonna be looked at. But as Greg was saying, for argument's sake, say we took this down to 200 and we thought that was a reasonable budget to get the project done. There are other capital projects that are right behind it to backfill that 50K.
Which is good.
Yeah, so... Yeah, so just saying that while we may agree or convince ourselves that we could squeeze this budget down a little bit more, and of course we should, but there'll be other projects that quickly come in that are as important that, that we need to keep moving, right? I think the $250,000 net-net is probably going to stay stable.
All right, well, I just mean, I don't want to, I don't want to say that I want to save the 50 for something else, because even if we did, that would go towards another capital project.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But what I'm saying is, is just when you look at a ticket like this and people say the number a quarter of a million dollars, maybe there's a way of going, you know what? All these items here, this was kind of a rough estimate, and this we're going to hear from Don in a second. This is a rough estimate, so that we wouldn't have an overage, but maybe we can bring this in for such-and-such, and yes, this is high and this is high. And just so that when people see it, what, let's say we, we, we vote yes, this happens, people see it, and they go, wow, this was worth $185,000 and that's what it cost, as opposed to, wow, is this worth $100, $250,000? So that, that's what I'm driving.
I'm with you.
This wasn't at Don's?
Can we hear from Don?
Don, will you please just go through the talk about the painting, why it's expensive?
Sure, sure, we'll, we'll start there. The flooring materials are the same. This is a, this is a hard quote for $42,000. The painting is $23,000. All of that furniture needs to be moved away from the walls and put back. A lot of it's labor. There's 10 door frames in there that have to be painted by hand twice. This includes all the ceiling material, the grids, and all the ceilings also painted twice. It'll include two coats on all the walls, too. And that's a hard number. I did not go out to bid at this point. This is just the painter that we've been using. We may be able to save a couple of pennies here or there, but it's not going to be significant. Lighting upgrades, there's $25,100 in there. It'll probably net out around $18,000 after a rebate. That room poses a challenge, as do most of these, because the heating for our, and cooling for our building comes around the, the lighting fixtures. So those lighting fixtures have already been retrofitted back in the late 80s or 90s with, with something that somebody had taken out the guts and put in something else. So we're going to have to do the same. There's, there's about $119,000 in furniture in that number. And that's a hard quote. Now, we can reduce some of the furniture if we choose to. There are, I broke it down into areas. There's, there's 23 workstations presently, but there's no middle school presence in there. So we're going to, this would include the 6th through 12th school. So there'll be about 31 workstations in there when we're done. The workstation would include a, just a 48-inch work surface by 24 inches with a two drawer file, a small lateral file for 30 inches with two drawers, a chair and a guest chair. That would, that's what goes into each of the 31 stations. The total cost of just the stations alone is $59,675. Doing that room, the 8,025 square feet includes the IT area that's within the room. I didn't think it would be appropriate to do the room around the IT room and not do the three stations that are in the IT room also. So there's another $16,000 in, in furniture for the IT room. That would include just what I described, plus a table for each one of the, the workstations, an additional table. The collaboration is nothing more than, in each of the areas that you see there, the humanities, this, the sciences, the math, et cetera, they each have a, a small conference area with four chairs or six chairs around it. The, this $10,200 would replace what there are there now. What's there now is a round 16-inch table that's of pressboard construction with a faux wood finish on it. And there, some of them are rickety and some of them are darn ugly. I'm including book storage in here, $15,000. And this is nothing more than what we have here, but eight feet tall. There's a lot of books there. There is an opportunity to save there if we could eliminate a lot of the books. There's also an opportunity to increase price. If we go to the rolling system that you see, where they nest together and move, that's another $5,000 bucks. It's about 23 grand for the amount that we need to store the, the books that are in. And that would be an area that just is bounded by the shelving. So you would make a, a works, a book storage area that's just shelving, and it, it creates its own wall. So we're not even building walls around this thing. The book trucks, right now today, if you look in the classrooms, there's books stored everywhere. And the, the maintenance people have to literally move all the books in these rooms to clean these rooms, whether they be in classrooms or in this area. So I've included 10 carts, little wheeled carts, dual sides, that they could store books and move books around. So there's, there's an opportunity if you want to cut some of those back. What I call the eating area is an area that would contain three tables with four chairs around it each. So this is just the cost of those tables and the chairs that are around them. The copier area is nothing more than the cost of a number of tables that would create an area where today they have stapling, you know, three-ring hole punching. So there's a workspace alongside the copiers. The existing copiers are for, for the 1970s, when they just produced paper like it was going out of style. We don't need, we don't need it in that location, we don't need it as big, and we can consolidate it. But it does need a workspace around it, so many teachers can work at the same time. So these are, these are just some, some six-foot tables that would just be around the copiers. Demolition is just that. We're, we're going to have to move, like Dr. Cosentino said, the wiring all comes up from underfloor. We're going to have to, to move that. We're going to have to relocate the wiring. And I've got some money in to do some mechanical and electrical and some work in the restrooms and some moving expenses. Those I did estimate. Most, all of the other things are dead-on real prices. And if you could give me a second, solar, the roofs in this district have a 30-pound live load built into them. That live load is for our snow load and our rain load. In order to add more equipment to these roofs, you'd have to put more structure up here to hold it up. That makes the roofs, that makes that project cost prohibitive. The best way to handle the solar is out on the ground somewhere, if we have space out on the ground somewhere. And Bob was right. The only real way to do it is with a roof project. We brought, I brought in two other people, and all of them said, unless you started this with a 30-year roof, we're not interested at all. In terms of the wind coming up here, I talked with a, a wind turbine company. To operate a wind turbine, you need seven miles per hour sustained winds. And although on occasion we get that, we don't have it sustained here. So it would be a cost prohibitive project also. There was a company in Torrenton attempting to use a, a smaller than seven mile an hour wind, but they went out of business, so.
For you, Don.
Oh, no. Well, to get back to my original theology, I mean, we discussed, we went through the room, we discussed things, and I don't question your ability from the years of experience. My issue is, when you go before the public and say, we want to spend $250,000, and the public stands up and says, can I see what it looks like? Can I see a drawing? Can I see the prices that you got to bid? I mean, how can a board not bid out a $250,000 project?
The board will bid out a $250,000. This is a budget estimate. Peter, we're, we sit down and we do these budgets. We have a job to do. We, we run the district and we have our jobs to do. And then we sit down and we do a budget that's based on an estimate that's from our best experiences. Bob, myself, some phone calls from local contractors and people to help put it together. We had no intention of sharing the details right away, because we didn't have the details. But since last week, we've run around and found them for you. And we, we estimated $250,000, and my numbers come in around $243,000, so.
It still has to be bid.
Right.
I just wanted to speak in support of the, the renovation to the workspace. I think we've got, obviously, a few issues going on here. I think some of the, the people that have spoken out strongly about the workspace are actually worked up about another issue. That'll remain nameless for this minute. But if we just look at it as a renovation that we're considering, I think it's important for two reasons. I think the first reason is for the teachers. I think the teachers of Chapog, we need to value them. I think we, we spent a lot of time as a board talking about when we renovated the mall, how that important that was to visitors, to students. And I think, I think focusing on the teacher workspace sends a very clear message from this board and from the district that we value our teachers, that we want high-quality teachers, not that we're interested in them just using the same old stuff that's been here because it's cheap. And I think as a teacher, you know, that, that means something to me, that I can go to a workspace that is professional, when we're being told constantly that we have new challenges that we need to meet as teachers each year. So from that perspective alone, I think it's worth it. I think the, the other important reason why it's important is not just for teachers but for students. And I think in your presentation tonight, you touched on that a little bit. The, you know, this is not just a, when we say teacher's lounge, it makes people think that the teachers are sitting there having cocktails. And while they might like that idea, that's not going to happen. I think the reality is that teachers are working with students. This is going to benefit students. Students are having an opportunity to work with teachers who can't be in their classroom because there's another class going on. Parents are coming in and having private conferences with teachers. Visitors are coming in and meeting with teachers about curriculum and other, other areas of the state. I think students are actually going to be benefiting quite a bit from this program, maybe even more so than the mall in a lot of ways. I think the mall is great, and I'm, I'm so happy we did that. But I think there is a little bit of security in, in a smaller space, a more intimate space like that. And I can tell you, that's the model from, that I'm familiar with in, in Wilton. The teacher workrooms are not places where teachers are isolated from students, but places where students are there every single period, working with teachers. So I think we need to look at it as a resource for students, too.
I did forget to say one thing. We wouldn't be buying any appliances. We'd be reusing the existing refrigerator and the three microwaves that are there. And there's no coffee pot in there. Unless the teacher's got one squirreled in it, that's probably.
You probably do. Greg?
I was going to say, if, if this truly were the, the Four Seasons Chapog Spa, then I think, you know, maybe we can get the teachers to pay $150 an hour to staple in there, you know? Because I, I just don't quite, I, I understand people get worked up, but this is a learning space, this is a working space, and it's, it's an evaluation space, and it's a space for education to go on with students and for evaluation of students. And I, I think that, again, the, I think, Mike, you said it, you said it really as well as it could be said. We value our teachers, we need them to do, it, look, there's only one thing we can control as a school district and as a town. I, everyone tries to figure, how do we draw students? How do we draw people with students to this district? And there's only one thing we can control. We can provide the best education. We can provide the, we can make it the best high school that you can get to in this part of the state. But you can't do that if you don't make the investment in the physical plant and in, and in getting your teachers and your program to a whole new level. And you do that by investing in it. This is an investment to do that. Because that's the only thing we control. It's our only shot for improving the quality of life here and improving these communities. And we really have to make that investment. And I think this is it. That's why I'm very supportive of this. You know, it's easy to poke fun at it, because it's a teacher area, and, you know, the teacher should, you know, should work in the dungeon. But no, they really shouldn't. Not if you want to make their lives more efficient, so that they can devote more time, energy and effort to the students, because that's what they really want to do with their time. That's who teachers are and what they do. And when they have to spend extra time because they have an inefficient space, then we're, we're tiring them out on the wrong things.
Thank you. I just wanted to add to that, I think two, two things. I support this expenditure completely. And I think we're sending mixed messages if we don't do this. We expect our teachers to teach in a 21st century. We expect our, we have high expectations for learning, and yet we don't provide the space or the tools. I, I think people may, might not understand that that, that's the teacher's office. And, and it, we haven't done anything to bring that into this 21st century. So I, I think it's really important that we do that. And I also didn't realize before, but I, I am very excited about the fact that the middle school faculty will be included in that. I think we, you know, we've been moving to this 6-12 school. But until we bring the, the teachers together and, and they're collaborating and working together the way we want our curriculum, it, there's always, there's been a little disconnect. And, and it's sort of a, a last piece in bringing that all together. So I think educationally, that's, that's really important in bringing them together. I know we have teachers who are teaching in both the middle and the high school levels, and they shouldn't be running around trying to figure out where to put their coat down or, or where to meet with a student. So I like that that will all finally be unified. I think that's really important. All right, so we talked about the teacher workroom. So we kind of skipped 734. We jumped us over to 750. Does anyone have questions about 734, so we can just put that to rest? Because we did 733. 734 is capital facilities. We've got a few capital expenditures in there, nothing large. Okay, so, so we can move on from that. So program improvement changes 750. If we look at the additions first, let's just go through, if anyone has questions about any of the other items, we talked about the workroom and the advisor. Everyone fine with questions about any of those others? Alan?
Yeah, I, you know, there's, there's something I want to talk about, obviously, soon, that I have strong things of. But then there's another issue that was brought up tonight that I'm kind of confused about. So I think maybe the board, we should talk about how we feel about the, the enrichment, the talented and gifted change to that program. Because when I first hear something like that, I'm like, this is great. Because we have, for, as long as I've been here, we've identified talented and gifted, but we've had nothing programmatic. Other, and, and as we've talked about, we have, you know, leveling and tracking theories here at Chapog. So there really is nothing specifically for those. And we've been told that very often we lose some students whose parents want them to be more, you know, very rigorously challenged at a high level to either local or distant private schools. So as soon as I hear talented and gifted, I think, that's great! But then the argument comes up, and I don't have an instant reaction to the argument of, well, you're taking money away from something which benefits a great majority of people and putting it towards something that benefits the few. So I'm really torn. You know, I, I, as I said, I originally thought it was great, but then I think, all right, we're cutting Spanish, but we're going to be moving the money towards something that is, you know, benefiting less people. How do, how do we feel about that?
That was your trade, to, to half the Spanish for the?
Well, that's kind of how that was put forward. Am I, am I, am I wrong?
It was put forward that way or not, I just want to know that, that's where you?
Well, that's not my trade. I would, I would be happy, I'm just thinking about the way people think about this, if, you know, that was what I understood the trade was. If, if that trade doesn't exist, or if it's a false equivalency, then I am very happy to keep full Spanish and add a talented.
I'd like, I think you were going to jump in.
Yeah, I was.
One of my questions was about the Spanish program and what your thoughts were there.
Okay. So first, let me start with the tag and the STEM. Although this tag and the STEM is one position, one person, 1.0, it's not a 50-50 cut. It really is almost, in my eyes, possibly to begin with, a one-day of tag and a four-day of STEM enrichment. Because we do not have a lot of identified students at this point. And that is for a couple of reasons. Number one, we don't have an identification program that is used with fidelity, because number one, we don't service the kids. So no one is ever really excited to have their children go through a program when, what does it do? Really, nothing. So I think part of the tag program is, in my eyes, and of course, everything is, you know, up to the planning of the administrative team, is to really grow this program, okay? Start with what you have, get someone in there who is knowledgeable about talented and gifted, and, you know, we have connections to CAG, which was the Minds and Emotions, to work with, with these people, to develop a program of identification, where maybe all of our third graders take the old set. And then we see where they fall in, and then we start to do some, as Emily said, portfolio assessment, teacher ratings, and really start to identify based on not only the talent, the gifted piece of academically, but maybe even the talent in the arts and music. So I think one of the reasons that I am proposing that piece of the puzzle is because with conversations with many people in the region, it is a program that is attractive to parents. And when you hear parent, when you hear from community members, people don't come to us or they're leaving us because we do- or they're leaving us because we do not meet the needs of those really high-end kids. I, I felt that it was a good way to address that. The STEM piece in the beginning is really going to be focused on grades three, four, and five. And both programs will be not only dealing with the students and promoting more critical thinking, problem-solving, engaging lessons. They also will be working with the teachers in a co-teaching model to help them to become more facile in dealing with differentiated instruction and how you meet the needs of all kids in a coaching manner. So, I don't, in my mind, I don't hook up the half of Spanish with the half of tag. So, and if you did that, it would not, the tag would go, in my mind, the tag would go away and then the STEM would really be a half a position, which is doable. Now, with the Spanish, you know, when, when you look at the, the staff and you see everything that we have and you try to present a budget that's efficient and effective and you know that no one really wants to cut anything, you try to offer a program that, you know, is attractive to families, that has a lot of positive support. And my original thought was to, you know, cut Spanish completely. And then I, I brought it back to halftime. And with halftime, we can instruct all of the kids. It's less time. It's, it's maybe a half hour for the younger grades and forty-five minutes a week for the older grades. But the other piece that I was looking at, and I mentioned this today with the administrators, is, you know, really having a better handle on the schedule, especially in the springtime. Because now everybody starts going on trips. I mean, almost every day, there's classes on trips. And, you know, instead of, you know, starting to schedule the Spanish teacher so maybe she can do a little more work during this time of the year for when the fifth grade or the fourth grade's on a trip, maybe then I'm giving more support to K or one or two. And really looking at that and trying to establish a program so that it's still part of the elementary schools and the kids are being exposed. And, but also being mindful that, you know, we just can't always have everything. And that's kind of where I'm coming from. I think one of the things that one of the parents, it might have been the first parent spoke about, you know, there's other ways to address languages too. You know, where you bring in, you buy some more computer software and you do some work with that. So, there's other ways to do that. You know, if I didn't have, if I didn't look at the budget in an efficient and effective way, I wouldn't cut anything. You know? But I just feel, so that's where I'm at. I never like said, oh, Spanish equals half a tag and stuff, in my mind. And if I made that suggestion, I didn't mean to.
Well, I mean, you can always ask the question, why have something that benefits only a few people? But if that were the question, then we might as well eliminate the sports program because not everybody plays sports. We should eliminate music because not everybody plays music. Pretty soon, before you're done, you wouldn't have anything going on in the school except the basic educational core of, of the curriculum and all, everything else would be out the door. You know, I, I frankly think this is a, a very little for the talented and gifted. I don't know if anyone in this room has had, has had the privilege to have attended talented and gifted education, but it is life-changing, whether it be in the arts or whether it be in academic subjects. We aren't even looking at doing anything of that level. But if we are going to make this into one of the best high schools around, we have got to start caring for not just, we, we've got to start caring for a lot of groups. And one of them is, is kids who are talented and gifted because they have needs, not the same needs as, as some of the special needs kids, but they've got special needs too. And, and it's not being met by the conventional education. And, and I think that we need to look at that. And I think we need to get a start. This is a little bit of a start. It's sort of scratching a little bit at it. But, but I think we need to go a lot farther in that regard. And I, I, I don't think the fact, I'm not a hundred, I'm not a hundred percent sure whether we're conveying the language curriculum the right way and whether we should be devoting more time to it and not less. I'm not sure of that either, but that's why we hire Pat and her staff to figure that out. But I, I really think we should, I, I just don't buy the argument that we're, we're taking something away that's benefiting a large number of people and giving it to someone, something that's benefiting a small number of people. I think it's a false equivalency.
Jen?
Oh, sorry. Can't see you later.
I hate to be a pain in the butt.
Wait, wait, but Jen hasn't spoken the whole night.
What? Who?
My turn.
Oh, your turn.
Do you mind?
Go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. I just want to, you know, it was interesting when Ann Lowe, who was the first one that spoke tonight, was talking about Spanish. I have to be really honest, you know, I, when I had heard that we were moving it from, from full-time to part-time for Spanish, I think partly because I'm a little removed now from the elementary school with Noah being up at Chapag, I wasn't really feeling pulled. And then when Ann spoke, it really kind of reminded me of the importance of the Spanish program at the elementary schools. And especially when both my kids did it and were involved in it. And, you know, I don't, I just remember the years of when Ginny was the Spanish teacher just because that's when my kids had her and had Spanish. And they loved the program. And I remember that we, they did so much. I mean, they participated in this, the world language.
Poetry.
Poetry. And, and we went to Danbury High School and we were involved there one year. And it was, my son was excited about the program and loved it. And I, I don't, and I, that changed. Something happened where we weren't participating in that anymore. And I have to tell you, my son stopped loving it as much. And I don't know what, in terms, we, because there was a couple of years where, I know in fifth, fifth grade, we didn't participate. I don't think that we participated when he was in fourth grade either. But he did it in kindergarten, for first grade, second, and third, he participated. So, I kind of feel like something's gotten law, Jenny's to gaiety.
She was in her first year.
But again, I, I don't know why that stopped. So, I, I was really reminded when Ann spoke about the importance of the program and she's right. And I'm, I'm really feeling like I don't want to give that up. I want us to actually go back to where it used to be and maybe, and, and I love the idea of having the reach students, having a little Spanish in their day. For me, I, I, that really kind of changed exactly how I thought about it. So, for me, I, I want us to rethink that personally. That's just me. But if we do it, do it in a way that really gets everybody.
Peter, you were at home forty-five minutes ago. Don't just. All right, listen.
All right. Peter and then Mike.
No, do you, you, you ready to go? I mean, you're fired up to go. Go ahead.
I'm ready.
Go ahead.
I actually think that your proposal tonight is a nice compromise between some people who probably don't want Spanish to change at all and maybe others who are probably pushing you to cut it and you could have saved even more money. So, I, personally, I, I think it's a reasonable compromise to look at reducing it, but not eliminating it totally from any of the grades. I think it's important to keep it K twelve, really. I mean, that's, that's one of the things that, you know, when I tell friends who teach at other districts about that, they're, they're incredibly impressed. I think that that's amazing that we have that. And I think I would ask of you to do two things. One, to look at the data from that reduction to see if, is it really causing a deficit? Because if we made the change, we could really change it a year from now and, and restore it back. If you saw, for example, that student scores or student interest level in the language was really dropping off, that would be of concern to me. And I think we'd need to do an about-face on that kind of a cut. I'm hoping that it wouldn't, particularly if you were very thoughtful about it. And we've gotten some ideas even from the audience tonight and, and board members have mentioned ideas, you know, why not talk to ASAP to find out how they could support language enrichment? Why not talk to our ACE program at Burnham and find out whether they might be able to support it in a before or after-school setting? Why not talk to residents in the community to find out if they might like to volunteer to work in the schools after-school, working with students? I think there, there's a lot of ideas and I think we could pull in the community. It would be a great way to pull into the, the community and, yeah. But I think we, we need a, we need a plan. I think if we're going to do that kind of cut.
Yeah, Pete.
I have a question for the superintendent. This, this is a, a person that you're going to spread over three schools. Is that, am I to understand that?
Yes. The person currently now goes over three schools.
This is my personal opinion. We have a very small school system and I understand the concept of all these programs. I don't know how you can be good at being all things to all people in a shrinking school population. I understand that you want to be. I understand that maybe parents like it. It, it, it makes it sound exciting and everything, but how good can a school system be at this size, expanding itself to be all things to all people? That's the problem I see. I'd rather be good at fewer things than half-heartedly or whatever it may be, because that's where I think you're going to wind up, to all things, to all people. I really believe that. I've never, I've never seen a company be all things to all people and make products that are good for everybody. I, I think you have to focus on whatever the staff does best, whatever the students are doing best, whatever the school system is known for best, that's what we need to spend our money on. The minute you start spreading yourself out, I don't think you get any better, to be quite frank. It looks better in, on the paper when people look at your school and say, wow, look at this school. It does all of these wonderful things. But, I mean, who evaluates that? How, how good are the students really doing? Or is it just schmoozing people? You know what I mean? That's how I, that's how I feel about this. I'm more conservative in that regard than trying to, you know, make the school system look terrific. I mean, I think we need to be good in fewer things rather than try to be great in all these things. I think in the end, you don't make it. That's my personal opinion. And is, is it past ten o'clock?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I really liked what, what Jen said.
I think that it's partly the, you know, the issue of cutting it in half could actually improve it because it seems as if perhaps the, even the, the hole that we were cutting in half was not as whole as the program used to be three or four years ago. So, maybe improving it and making it more, as exciting, changing the curriculum, looking into the curriculum, making it as exciting and as involving as it used to be, that, that in and of itself, even though it'd be less of it, less better is more, is better than more not as good. How's that?
Yeah, Ezra.
Yes. Yeah. Can I stay on the mic and change subjects?
Well, does everyone, has everyone talked about Spanish? Should we move on? They've shared? Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Oh, no. Chuck, Chuck away. Okay. So, as far as, as the big elephant tonight, you know, we heard an awful lot of people. But my feeling has always been that I, I, you know, it's coming from long-range planning. We didn't do this in long-range planning. And, and it was, it was held, these, these kind of big, broad swath changes were held from long-range planning to not be in any way ignite any kind of public reaction. And I think that, that it was hard to tell from tonight because, because our staff was saying multi-age and multi-grade and they are different. They're very different. And it's almost as if multi-grade is a stopgap, but multi-age is, is a, is a goal. And I think that's something that, if it really is going to be a wonderful thing for our region, I, I think it needs to be universal and I think it needs to be developed and I think it needs to be a process that we, we work on before we do it. As opposed to making the plan to do it and then, and then working on it for the next, you know, couple of months. So, you know, because that way it will give the, the, the parents a much less startled reaction. So, on the other side of things, I really feel for this year, for next year, despite the fact we're having these, these population issues currently at Burnham, I really would hope that we could keep things stable and consistent for the next couple of years as we enjoy this unity that we have and, and build AgSTEM. We also need to look at the way a stability at, at Burnham enables us to attract more people. In the same way, this, this new development of AgSTEM, which really officially is just very new, the way that begins to develop an interest in our region and, and attract people. And regardless of whether the intentions are for the classifiability or sociability or budget or dealing with taxpayers and, and diminishing population, regardless of what all the incentives might be to multi-age next year or multi-grade next year, whichever it happens to be, I really feel that whatever those pros are, I think they're really outweighed by the cons of projecting more volatility. And that it's not just the volatility of, of the population, which we saw tonight for Gertif Man, it wasn't even that volatile. People were very straightforward about it. There is, you know, there is the opportunity for some more inter-town wrangling, which we'd, I'd love to have stop and go back to how happy we were a few months ago. And, and I think that it is an investment on our part to, to maintain the status quo during this, this developmental period, despite the fact that I appreciate that it isn't one-hundred percent ideal. I was happy to see the letter that went out today. I had, I had talked to Dr. Costino about that going out a, a month or so ago, because then by now, we might have, there might be an effect on the budget as far as there might be more people. I think that kind of thing is, as much as, as that is an anathema to some people to, to, to move children around the district, that's actually well within the purview of the, of, of the administration to, to balance class sizes. And we've, we've done that in the past in, in, in Region Twelve forcibly. And we've done it in the past and we still do it, obviously voluntarily. I'm not sure that is a solution we want to look at right now too, because that's more volatility. So, what I would like to do is I'd like to, the issue here is not that there are any cuts involved, because clearly the budget, there, there isn't. But what I think we need to do is we need to restore the, and I don't know whether it's going to be more or less, but restore the sixty-five-some-odd thousand dollars that it would take to rehire a math interventionist for Booth and Burnham, which would therefore allow the second and third grade to remain intact for the next year or so. I, I fully believe that the drawbacks that are associated with small class size can be handled in much the same way that Teresa and Kathy talked about it today. The fact there is a lot of interaction between the grades at Burnham anyway. And in fact, both Booth and Burnham are known for that, for the interaction between all the grades and certainly activities that, and even class activities that can, that can happen on certain subjects between the grades. So, that whether or not it is a full day or a part day of independent for, a second and third grade, at least nominally, it is a second and third grade which will be less, less of an ignition point, both within and without the region. So, I would, unless I'm mistaken, I believe that the solution is, is that, that math interventionist position that the third grader teacher would be taking. I'm assuming that it's a full?
It's a half.
It's a half. We have covered, we have coverage for one. So, then I would only be suggesting that we make a motion to add, what, thirty-five thousand to the budget to cover the salary for a one-half FTE math interventionist for the twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen school year. While maintaining the, well, I'm making a motion regarding the budget, but, you know, not necessarily part of the motion, but it, it presumes that my intention is to maintain the, the independent second and third grade at Burnham.
Would I like to comment?
Yep.
Oh, you still have the floor.
Yeah.
So.
Go ahead.
So, right now, the plan would be, let's talk in terms of FTEs. We've got the two-three combination. You've got two FTEs covering that.
Currently, no. We have one point five.
No, not current, currently in your budget.
Currently, oh, current, I'm sorry.
You mean right now?
I'm sorry.
In the building now, this budget year or next budget?
No, actually, in this budget, in, in the next budget year.
Oh, that's what you are.
So, in your plan.
The proposed budget.
For this combination of two-three.
Right.
You have, how many FTEs?
One point five.
One point five.
Right.
Okay. So, to go back to what you're suggesting, we have to add a half?
Yes.
And that would bring us up to two?
Yes.
Right. Basically, one and one again.
Right. And Bob could give you the, more of an exact number. I don't know if thirty-five thousand is correct.
But it would, it would seem to me then we, we have more FTEs than what you were planning, what you were planning on needing to get the job done, because I think we're saying we want to get to the same place, but take a different route. Right? Because we're, we're going to teach the same curriculum at the end of the day, we're going to write the same, same teaching hours, it's just how you go about it. So one is a traditional path and one is a, is a, is a different path. And you could argue which one is better, but the, but, but they're getting the same level of education, the same level. But it seems now we're going to go from 1.5, and because we have to split them out, we're bringing in a, an extra half a head. Right? So why don't we trade off, we were going to bring in one full-time head for the, for the tag and STEM enrichment, why can't you turn that down to a half-time person? Basically, well, I mean, we're talking about the number of people, and people can multiple, you can do multiple tasks. So you took this one additional head and said, okay, I'm going to put half you on, on the STEM enrichment, and the other half aim you back at the two, three, your incremental head for two, three. I think you get all the work done and it's budget neutral.
I think, I think it's that way, maybe it is budget-wise split it over that way, but the idea is that you have one FTE who's the second grade teacher and one FTE is the third grade teacher.
Yeah.
Now, but we're dealing with that, and that's the way it is now. But we still need to come up with a half FTE who's a math interventionist.
Yeah.
And so what you're saying is that one person would be half math interventionist and half STEM?
Why not? If they're skilled in doing math intervention, then that, that is STEM by definition.
Isn't that, isn't that cutting back on A, our STEM, which is rather vital to AgSTEM, and on our tag?
No, because I don't, because, because we were going to teach two, three with one and a half people. Now we're going to go to two people and teach two, three. It seems like we got a half a person of surplus in there.
I don't, I don't think so, though. I, I think that.
Just, if we're, if we're looking at the budget, though, if we're looking at the, the increase, if we restore the 0.5 math interventionist.
We've already, that's already in the budget.
It's in the, okay, so if we bring, so you'd be bringing in another $35,000 roughly, $36,000 roughly, to the budget?
Is that correct, Bob? Okay.
Okay.
Yes, if we added another 0.5 person.
Right.
On the budget, that would increase the staff at the elementary by, by one full person.
Right.
And if we lose, from my numbers, I gave everybody this little sheet, this would then, we're still down minus 1.4 at Shapag.
So the, the.
We're adding 1.0, and right now, that's like a positive, we're adding $36,000 to the budget. And at this point, Anthony has, we would have a half a STEM if, a half is, well, no, let me, let me say something. Right now, the way it is, we just have a half of interventions hanging out, and we still have in the budget, the, I'm sorry.
I should have known that. Right now, if we add the half of an elementary teacher, we would have an addition of $36,000. We still have in this budget, one full-time tag and STEM person.
Mm-hmm.
And the half of intervention. We still have that right now.
Which is great.
If we did what Anthony said, we would then take away a half.
Right.
Okay? Which would be budget neutral, again, we, not budget neutral, but budget neutral to what I put, I.
Proposed.
Proposed, and the half of math intervention at Booth Free would be hooked up to a half a STEM person. And that would eliminate the tag piece at this point.
But even if we didn't do that very creative solution, and I appreciate that, so, good idea, I, I think we're talking about a very, very small increase to your proposed budget. Your proposed budget was a 0.08% increase.
Yes.
Even, I'm thinking it would probably move from 0.08, and Bob can check the numbers here, to something like a 0.38?
No, 0.24.
Or 0.24?
What?
0.24.
Bob, what are you saying it would be?
You're talking, you're talking to me when you put this together.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. No, but, but we want to know how much it would be to add 36,000. I would think it's probably about 0.25, between 0.25 to 0.30, because. 0.28.
Which is, which is a fantastic number. I mean, I think one of the, the things you were hearing from some of the first selectmen and residents is that they wanted us to be very careful about a, a budget. That's an incredibly conservative budget increase.
0.28%.
Yeah, I mean.
I have a question.
Pete.
Are we, are we saying we're eliminating the two, three classes? Is that what you're telling me? We're going to have a two-class and a three-class?
That's what the motion is.
That's what the, yeah, that's the motion.
I wouldn't support that. Not with declining student enrollment, not with the size of the classes we have, not with the size of the budget we have. You're asking taxpayers in my town to pay for two classes with how many students?
Six and eight.
Six and eight.
Six and eight. I don't know. Rather than combine it, I, I really have problems with that. I think you're going to run into a, a wall at some point. I mean, I realize everybody's trying to make a situation solvable, but I don't know. I have to hear, I'd have to know a little more. I mean, it, it sounds like we're trying to, trying to placate a problem that would have been resolved three years ago, but people couldn't agree, and now we're suffering. Or people think they're suffering because this is what the problem by not solving produced, and now we want to be as creative as possible. So I guess it depends on whether you just want to spend about money to be creative and, and make it politically correct. I don't, so, that's my feeling.
Rebecca?
I appreciate that we are in a difficult situation. I think that everybody here knows it. All three towns voted down the consolidation, and quite frankly, I'm a little tired of hearing about it.
No, that's not correct. Washington voted in favor of consolidation.
Well, then I, I beg your pardon. But what troubles me is that if we want to have a different solution, then we have to, we have to do it uniformly and not have it be sporadic, and not have it feel reactionary. And all due respect to Pat and her staff, they're doing what they can with what they have, and they're trying to come up with the best solutions that they can. But I don't think that doing something as dramatic as a two, three combined classroom when there's not a clear history of something like this being incredibly successful, we have three schools of distinction, we are going to make Burnham that much different from the other two, and that's not a fair solution either. That's not saying that we're going to stay where we are, or that we're going to continue down any particular given road, but it has to be a regional solution and not a solution that's introduced sporadically or in a patchwork fashion.
Michael?
Just to follow up on that same point, you know, the, one of the things that, when I first joined the board, that was difficult, I think, to hear, is the idea of, of equity and, and thinking as a board member about the region and not just your particular town. And I know on occasion, we've had some tussles on the board with that, with the idea that small, even small programmatic changes at one elementary school might not necessarily be fair for the other elementary schools that might not have that benefit. But now we're talking about a huge change, and if we're thinking as a region, we have to think about all three schools, and, and I think we need to think long and hard before we do that. I think, you know, I'm glad that the superintendent and other members of the, of the administration are confident, but I think whenever we're making this kind of a, a major shift, we as a board need to feel confident. I want our parents to feel confident. I want town leaders to feel confident that we've thought it through, that we've looked as best we can. Maybe there's no perfect solution, maybe the, the research out there is as mixed as people in the audience were saying tonight, but I think there's, we need at least a year or two to be studying it, on the same vein that we use to study something major like the AgSTEM program. I would want us to continue having experts in. I think it's great that you invited members of the board and, and other members of the community to, to hear an expert on multi-age classrooms in Danbury. I think that's a good beginning. I'd like to see more site visits. I'd like to talk with people in other areas and maybe even have a committee formed of all the stakeholders that would be affected by this kind of a shift. I think it's a major shift, and, and I, I know it's difficult for us as a board to hear the passion that many of the parents brought tonight, but, you know, I get that. We're talking about their children, and as many of them said, they have one opportunity to, to do this well. But we're also talking not just about those children, but we're talking about one of our member communities, and even the, even some of the people who spoke tonight, who are perfectly fine with, with Burnham maybe eventually disappearing, noted that, that might be coming next for some of the other towns. It's just that since we're the smallest, we're feeling that pinch first. But I, I would like to think that if, if there was something major going on with the, the education of students in any of the three towns, I would want, as a board member, to be doing everything I felt like I could until I've exhausted all the opportunities. I don't think we're there yet. We might, in fact, be there at some point in the near future. That would be a shame. But I think we have, we have to give it a little bit more time. You know, when we were talking about the benefits of the AgSTEM program, I don't think any of us thought that, that it was going to be a magic wand, that all of a sudden, now that we got approval, or we're close to approval, from the state on building, that it would be the next year, our, our population problem would be solved. I, I don't think anybody on the board was that foolish. So we know that it's going to be a few years before we're going to see that, and I think it, it's fair for us to be holding the town officials to the fire, too, on this issue, that it shouldn't just be the Board of Ed trying to solve a population problem, that we need the town officials to be working hand in hand with us. And I know, I, I do feel confident that in Bridgewater, we have some people doing that. I know that there are people and conversations going on in the other two towns as well on that issue, but it's not going to be a silver bullet that, that solves our problem overnight. We know that it's going to be a few more years before we see that, that shift, and, yeah, I, I'd hate to lose that positive feeling, you know, because it was so nice being on the board for that brief shining moment when we had all three towns in harmony and we were working towards, towards a common goal. I still think we can get that back, and so I hope that I would get the support from my fellow board members on that, because we're not talking about something that's going to be us throwing money away. I'm not even saying that we, we might not be facing that at some point in the future, I just don't know if that future's arrived just yet.
Greg? Go ahead.
I, I recognize this as an area that's fraught with some, some degree of emotion and everything else. I just want to remind everyone here that under Connecticut's system of education, this Board of Education is not to bring people along. Is that going to be an acceptable educational result for the children in the schools, or is that not going to be an exceptional educational result? Because I think that's where our, our responsibility is, and, and that's where we have to go now. I, I think that, that what, what I think troubles me greatly is, is that we sometimes lose sight of that, and, because we're focused on trying to solve the political realities and problems. But as far as the time that's been spent to study it, we spent 18 months in a long-range planning process that looked at this issue, among others. We, we had a meeting at the school now four years ago, or three years ago, I think, almost four years ago, where we talked about multi-age classrooms between grades four and five, and we had a lot of presentation of information on that. We didn't spend a lot of time studying the AgSTEM program. We spent a lot of time implementing the AgSTEM program, but we didn't study it. You don't need to study something that's been around for 70 or 80 years, and just similarly, while it may not have been our experience that we've had multi-age or multi-grade classrooms, I think it's, I think the issue is not so much multi-age, we already have multi-age classrooms. The question is multi-grade. I mean, there's at least a school in these towns that some of the board members' children have gone to, the Montessori system that makes it their hallmark of how they educate, is through multi-grade classrooms and multi-age classrooms. And so it, it's not like there are no examples of this, and we're, and we're taking a flyer, but I think that when it comes down to it, if the educational professionals we've hired believe that the education of our students is best served in one particular way, then the next question is, but is it, is it acceptably served in the alternate way? And if the answer to the first question is yes, and the answer to the second question is no, I think it's a much easier decision, because if our duty is to the children's education, then we have to put that as paramount. If it made everybody happy for us to do something which was to the detriment of the children that we have in this district, it wouldn't really matter that they were happy, because we haven't served our master, who is the children. And, and that, I think, is, is a critical point we have to look at. So that's what I'm interested in hearing, is, from the superintendent, is, is the answer to those two questions.
Well, that's okay, and I don't know if I remember the two questions, but I'll just give you a little information. First of all, when I started the, the budget process, we were really moving towards more multi-age. After last week's presentation and a lot of feedback, you saw tonight when Teresa made a presentation, when Kathy made her presentation, it's multi-grade. The, the proposed classes are multi-grade. So what does that mean? That means that we are teaching the second grade curriculum and the third grade curriculum, just like K and one, we teach the first grade curriculum and the kindergarten curriculum. So I am very pleased with the plan that we have in place. There are two teachers in that room for 14 kids, all the way till 12:15, and then in the afternoon, there are also a lot of times when there are two teachers, when the STEM person comes in, the STEM enrichment teacher, three times a week, when the second step counselor comes in, the kids go to specials. But also, because it's two classes and they're going to specials together, that could also be broken up. So I can send, I can give them separate specials if I wanted to, because we have that schedule available, and that teacher could be alone with the second grade or the third grade. I, I will support whatever decision the board makes. I feel that it, it's my role, and I take it seriously, to provide the board and the community with the best budget that I think that provides the best academic program for all students, and is mindful of the community, because only 10% of the people use our schools. The other 90% want to know, they ask all the time, why does our budget go up or stay the same and our enrollment go down? I believe through anecdotal research and through readings, and the presenters were right tonight, you can find pro and con, pro and con on all of the information out there. But the thing that I'm concerned about is six students in a class. Now, I know there's a lot of socialization that goes on at Burnham, I know they do a lot of whole class, they combine kids, they're with other schools, they, our schools mix and match, but six students in a class is academically stifling. There's no discourse after a while, you know, six kids, they all get their own little piece of the social, I don't know what you want to call it, mountain, you know, who's the athlete, who's the one who loves music, who's the one who maybe be a little quirky, and that's kind of stuff happens. And. And that's kind of stuff happens and it can be detrimental to students. It's wonderful when it works. It's wonderful when it works, but when it doesn't work, it causes problems. And that was really my biggest goal. And I understand that people are not happy with it and if you want to put back two teachers, that's fine and we'll make it work because that's what we do. But you know, we just keep kicking this can down the road. I mean, there are three kids in kindergarten, so in two years, we're going to have the same conversation because no one ever wants to change and no one ever wants to cut anything or no one ever wants to make a sacrifice. So then we're going to have three kids in a class. And I just, you know, I'm, I feel it's my job to tell you how I feel about it and how I think the kids and we need to move forward. But I also respect the board and I understand the politics and I hear the parents and I see how upset they are, but it's not multi-age. It's multi-grade. We already do it there. The K-1 class has been very, very successful and these students coming back together would be the original K-1 class. But that was my thinking about it, but again, it's not my budget anymore. It's your budget and so I'll respect and do whatever you want, but that's, that's my thinking. I don't know if I answered your questions, but that's my thinking.
That's good. Everyone's going again. Jim?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of this motion. You know, I've heard a lot of people tonight talk about equity. I don't know how equitable it is that we have one teacher, for example, and I'm the one who always speaks about have to think regionally and not for your town, but looking regionally, we've got 16, 17, 19 kids in Washington Primary School grades and we've got six kids in second grade in Burnham School and eight kids in third grade in Burnham School. You tell me how that's equitable. I heard Mr. Lyon tonight say that the present budget is adding $500,000 to the town of Washington's load. Now you want to increase the budget so that you can have a full-time teacher for six students in the Burnham School. I think it is kicking the plan down the road. I don't like to have parents come here. I appreciate the fact that they're passionate and they care about their students. I don't doubt that, but I don't appreciate parents coming in here and threatening the board. It really turns me off. If my kids went through the system, if my kids were in a school of six and eight at a class, I would have no problem with combining the schools. I trust the teachers to do a good job and to deliver the curriculum. I really don't understand what the issue is. It is, I think, resistance to change. I bet, I believe that the students would be absolutely fine. It's the parents who are, have got the problem and that's my belief. I believe the students would be absolutely fine doing this. I believe in the efficiency of our staff and they're excellent teachers. The Burnham School is a wonderful school. Kids do really great over there. They have excellent teacher and I have no doubt that that would continue. So you know, talking about equity and disparate treatment and all that, well, it's right in front of us. Disparate treatment, having a full-time student, a teacher for six grade, six children and for eight children as opposed to the other classes. Now, there is eight students in the third grade at Booth Free. The problem is though, that to combine that with the other classes that they have either above or below gives larger, you know, it's close on that one quite frankly, but it gives, it gives larger numbers than what we're talking about here. Six plus, six students plus eight students is 14 students. I just don't see a problem with that. I really don't. And it was another point I wanted to make and I forgot what it is, but I think, I think that the students would be fine. And I think Greg's right, we have been talking about this for some period of time. I thought Paula Conway made an excellent point that this was something that was known. If the consolidated school was voted down, this was an issue that we had to deal with. And if, and my point was, if we had the same numbers at the Washington Primary School, I would have no problem recommending, voting to combine the classes at Washington Primary School. We don't. And the fact that we, it was made a point by several parents that if we do this, we're going forward with this. Well, that's not necessarily true. If these classes bounce back and get back to a larger size, I would have no problem separating them again and giving them each full-time their own teachers. But that's not the situation that we're facing next year. So I think on an equity point, region-wide and for the health of the students themselves, I have to agree with Pat. I'm not an educator, I'm not a professional, but I went through school and we had, you know, we can all tell our own war stories. I had a class of 40 kids in my class all through grammar school. And to be in a class of six and eight, I just don't think is, is fair or right. And so I will, I'm opposed to this motion.
Okay, Michael?
Just want to keep going with one, a couple of the points that Jim was just making. In terms of equity, I think, you know, we, we can't think about, well, every student is going to have the exact same experience, but I think it's our job to make sure that every student in Region 12 has a high-quality experience. Now, if we're all of the same mindset that in terms of educational soundness, multi-grade classrooms are at least as good as the traditional model, if not better, then maybe what we should be doing is thinking about moving in that direction as a region. Why should we just look at Burnham as the experiment? You know, maybe we could be looking at all three schools and looking at implementing multi-age classrooms in all three schools. So how could that work? It could work very easily. For example, in Booth Free School, the third and fourth grades could be combined. It would be a class of 18. You'll note that if you look at Washington Primary, there are at least three classes at Washington Primary that have larger size. So we're not talking about creating a monster here. We're talking about creating, you know, something bigger than they have. That's true. How could we do it at Washington? We could do it by combining K-1, which has already been proven to work according to what we've heard at Burnham, and there could be two classes of 14 at Washington Primary. So I think if we as a board agree that this is the model that we need as a region to be moving toward, then we should be looking at it in all three elementary schools. We shouldn't just be saying, well, Bridgewater is the smallest, let them take the hit and we'll worry about it later on down the road. I don't know if that's giving students the same kind of equitable experience as much as we can.
I haven't said anything yet, so I just want to jump in. There's a lot, there's a lot to say. So I, to start, feel very confident that multi-grade classrooms can be very successful. I don't think they always are and we talked about this in the past when we were looking at this and the long-range planning, that the research shows it's, what's most important is the training of the teacher and if you have quality teaching, it can be very successful and actually in some cases more successful depending on the students and their needs. And I think that the plan that Pat has proposed with having two teachers in there until 12:15 and then specials in the afternoon, I mean, it is essentially two teachers but bringing the students together. And I just wanted to add that I have a really good friend who is a teacher in the Warren School and has been teaching multi-grade for a couple of years. And she shared a few things with me as I was telling her I was coming into this meeting and she said that it was difficult at first as a teacher because of the training and the new curriculum, but now that she's been doing it, she loves it and feels that if she ever went back to teaching a single grade, she would do it differently because of the things she's learned. And I think a lot of that is moving towards that individualized education which we as a board have talked about. We're not, this is not that. That looks more like multi-age, not multi-grade, but it's something that I think as a board we should consider. And she also shared that in the Warren School, the parents did not accept it quickly. Change is difficult. People don't understand what they don't know and there were a lot of heated meetings. She said, you know, those were really difficult times, but they've come around so far now that they're, they're moving multi-grade with their entire school even though they started out of need for small enrollment, but now they've moved to a class. They've multi-grade in, they're going to be in every class next year, including a class that didn't need it. They're going to have two, I forget which it is though, is it three fours or, in fact, they're going to run two of them because they had enough students, but they want the whole school to be on the same plan. And what she said is that the parents are so supportive of it that they got together with the administration to put together a pamphlet that they put in all of the real estate offices in their town because they feel that it's a real selling point, that it has really brought their school together and has been really cohesive. It's been just sort of a wonderful process for them. So having said that, I feel that we're not quite there. I would never, ever support anything that I did not think was educationally sound because as Greg said, that is the most important job that we have. And in my mind, that's, I look at the education first and the budget second and I know not everybody would appreciate that, but that's, that's how I approach it. So I feel that that, the two-three combined class would be educationally sound, those students would be getting what they need, but I could, I could support not starting it this year, only for a year, but for a year while we continue to educate our parents, attend workshops, have parent, educating, and not just the parents, but, but everybody in our community. I think, I can, I can see how we have to continue work there. And I think that we should be putting this conversation back to the long-range planning. We need to be talking about this because as some of our speakers said tonight, all of our schools are moving in this direction. I'm not sure about, I would have to think about the implementing in all the schools for the sake of equity, only because of the training require, I mean, it's a huge investment. I think it maybe could be phased in because, because there's a lot of intensive training and we've done that with the teacher that's in the K-1 classroom. It would happen with the two-three and there's a, there's been a progression there and we can see the progression, you know, with that K of three, you know, we're clearly going to have to be thinking about something very, very soon, whether, if it's not multi-grade, it'll have to be something else. So we really have to think about that. So I could see supporting this by delaying it a year. I do feel a little guilty that we are kicking the can down the road because we really need to be talking about this. We've known this ever since we chose to keep all three of our schools, that we were going to have to really look at how we provide this, the education. I think when you talk about equity, there's, there are multiple ways of looking at that. There's equity in curriculum presented, there's equity in, so inputs, dollars spent or teacher to child ratio. I mean, even with reducing the half, even combining the two-three class in Burnham, the staff ratio to student is, it's, while I did the math, 10.8 to one, it's still, still have more staff per student in that building than the other two buildings, even if you combined it and reduced a .5 teacher. So there's, so there's equity of time with a teacher, that's face-to-face time, there's equity of curriculum. There are a lot of different ways of looking at equity and so, so I think we need to sort of define what does that mean? If the curriculum is presented, whether the students are in one classroom or in two classrooms, I don't see how that makes a difference. And I really, I do think that socialization piece is a large piece that we need to learn more about. The last thing I just want to mention is that I also think, so the bottom line of this proposal is adding $36,000, having a plus .28 budget increase is a very good and reasonable budget. However, if, and I did this math based on some numbers I dug out from last, I don't see the numbers here, but it appears that our elementary schools as a whole are going down 23 students from last year. And yet we're increasing staff by one. So that's, and I'm, you know, I will support that STEM addition. I think that enrichment is, fits with our philosophy of what we're trying to do. I like the creative ideas that were presented with the part-time Spanish, but increasing other opportunities because I think language is very important. But I do not think that that is a long-term strategy that we can continue to, you know, increase our staff and while our students are decreasing. We have capital needs in all of our buildings. We can't, we can't, we just have to be mindful, I think, of the staffing. $36,000 this year is not a huge amount, but I don't think going forward, we'll always be able to sustain that. So we have to really have that conversation about the future and the long-range plan. Jen?
I'm probably not going to sound as poised as you when I say this, but I'll do my best. Because I have to say that I came here tonight with a very clear idea of where I thought I was going to go. And listening to every, all the parents speak tonight and Evan too, really moved me in a way that I completely, I wasn't expecting. And not because I wasn't expecting the people of Bridgewater to move me, but I just, for me, it was a different kind of voice than I have heard in the past. I felt that they were passionate about how they felt, but they did it in a way that for me was very heartfelt and not angry. I agree with Jim that there were some, some weaving of words like repercussions, litigation, legal action that felt a little familiar from past conversations, which was beginning to put a little fire in my belly again. And I really didn't want to get a fire in my belly. But I also feel that how this had started again made me put my back up, to be very honest with you. The stirring of the pot, the things that were said that I'd heard from the meetings this weekend really disappointed me. And I was expecting something much uglier than I expected tonight and what I saw was something really beautiful and I really appreciated it, mostly because I felt like the parents that were up here really just were sharing how they felt and I could resonate with that in a way that just felt from one parent to another and I appreciated that. And hearing what you're saying, Michael and Michelle, really, I agree that I'm actually surprised that I'm willing to give this another year so that we can be very thoughtful about it, but I will tell you this, I won't give it another year after that because at some point, even for you, something has to be too small. And you know, the frustration that I had last week was all these parents getting up and speaking and saying, I just heard about this today. And that is, that's a shame if that's the case because this is not something that they should have heard for the first time and it is, and I don't know why they were surprised. I don't know if it was leadership wasn't sharing with them all along, and I'm not saying you, I'm just saying in general. I'm just saying that that to me seemed reactionary, like it just was so quick to be angry and that was very frustrating to me last week. So I just want it to be known right now, this will not be a surprise next year and any parent that comes to a meeting and says that they had no idea, I will not have that, I won't have any empathy whatsoever. But I did have empathy tonight because I understand that this is a struggle and change is hard and the unknown can be fearful. But I also think, and it's how we approach it this year, that can make us feel like we can educate ourselves in the process of educating the community. I will ask that the leadership in Bridgewater to be very mindful and thoughtful about how they choose to lead their community members, the people in their community rather, about really helping to educate them so when they come to a meeting like tonight and they share their voices, I want to hear more of that. I want to hear less about the threats of legal action because that makes me angry because that is not being a team player in a region that is threatening. And that to me is absolutely, I have, I have no room for. And that, to me, is absolutely, I have no room for it anymore. So I want to hear more of those voices. I want to hear Evan speak, I want to hear those people come and talk from their heart. I don't want to hear people throwing administration under the bus behind closed doors. I want us to be moving forward truly together, and not just when it is convenient. So this is my warning, I'm just saying this very openly. I want to see more of these people up here today speak, from the heart, and less of the dirtiness that I've seen in the past. And I don't think that that's unfair of me to say, because that will help me to be more willing to listen and to work together. Done.
Michelle's running the meeting.
I'm going.
Sorry. I don't know.
My head's blocked.
You talk like three to one here. I'm trying to give everyone a turn.
I think, I mean, a lot's been said, so I'll try not to be repetitive. But I do want to underscore some, I think, some points. We are, in a way, you know, and I don't think we're necessarily ignoring it, but we are kind of kicking this can down the road. We know that a longer-term solution, not permanent by definition, but a longer-term solution to the elementary schools, is still something we've got to solve for, that we haven't figured it out. And we've got to do that. And I don't think there's anybody in here who thinks that we could just continue to just keep plodding along like this and let the numbers go where they want, and everything will be okay. Unless, of course, they start trending up, then our problems get solved. But we can't, we can't, the numbers show that it's continuing to go down, so we have to do something. But I don't feel, and I would agree with Dr. Pat and the staff in terms of their judgment on the mixed grades. However, I don't feel like, I don't feel compelled right now to say that we couldn't go another year the way we are. But I would like to challenge us and make this sort of a condition, that if we agree to this as a board, that we give ourselves one more year to work through a plan, something. And then if this presents itself to us next year, that we're not having this same conversation again. That would be what I would like as an agreement going forward, and create some back pressure, that we've got to work, and everybody's got skin in the game to go figure this out, because I don't want all these parents who took the time to come up here and thoughtfully and emotionally feel like they've been dismissed and not heard, because that's not the right message. Again, I don't, I would defer to the staff and their judgment about this, but I don't feel strongly enough to go against the parents. You know, we're all parents of students, we all have, we all think we know what we want, and hopefully, it won't be detrimental in the long term, but I'm just one vote. But I do think, though, that we also have a response, yes, we have a responsibility, Greg, I agree with you completely, obviously, to give the children of this community the best education possible, but I don't think it's with an unbridled condition of, at any cost. Because the other 90% of the taxpayers in this town, and even the people who have kids in the school who pay taxes, you know, I think we have fiduciary responsibility, back to this community, to give them the best education at a reasonable cost, not any cost. You know, and I'm not saying the cheapest cost either, because God knows, we're not necessarily on a per-child basis, we're leading the pack in Connecticut, probably, or at the top of that pack. So that's not the only metric that we should be paying attention to. But I do think we have to exercise some fiduciary responsibility as we build a budget, as we build a program, and there are times, we're going to all have to make some tough choices and compromises as a region. We all chose not to, well, the region chose not to consolidate, okay. But that wasn't, I don't think what came with that was an understanding that, and therefore, nothing else will ever change. We know that that option is not palatable right now by the community, we respect that and move on, but we need to continue to try to figure it out and do it economically. So I would say I could support this, and maybe it's a principled point I'm going to make, but I feel it's important to make, because it echoes where Peak came and where we heard some of the other towns, who are paying 80% of the budget, to say that we could do this, but I'd like to see the gross budget that was submitted stay that same number. So if we're going to put $35,000 in for an extra head, I'd like to find $35,000 as something else that's got to come out. And I'll leave it, I don't want to be too prescriptive, Pat, but I would leave it up to you to figure out where it's got to come from. I'd like to see it stay in the salary pool, but, you know, if we have a job to do and you need X number of people to do it, I can respect that. But I think as a sort of lesson to us all, we need to make choices. And I'd like to find $35,000 worth of choices that have to come out of the budget, so something else doesn't get done. Otherwise, we'll never train ourselves to start getting out of this, so.
Second point.
That would be my motion.
Wait, we get it.
But, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we can, one at a time.
I didn't mean to put a motion on the table.
Greg?
See, I'm making progress, I'm getting trained on this mic. Look, if we believe that this caught people by surprise, and therefore, we need another year to get people into it, that might be a reason to go in that direction. However, the only people who can credibly claim to have been caught by surprise are the people who didn't live here through the long-range planning process and through the consolidation vote and the time after that. Because, Lord knows, you know, I think one thing that we maybe didn't understand, or a lot of people didn't understand, is that everybody's motives in that debate, I'm sure, were fine and pure. I think there are people who wanted consolidation, not to punish someone or not to make a point, but because they could see this coming. They could see that we were coming into a period of time when we were going to have fewer children, it was going to create these kind of challenges. I know I said to just about everybody who would listen back at that point in time, that look, voting this down is tantamount to turning at least one of our schools, and maybe two of them, into something like one-room or two-room schoolhouses. I said that because I could see this happening, and now here we are. So anyone who claims to be surprised clearly didn't live here. If you lived here back then and you're surprised, then you were in a hole somewhere, because it was loud and clear to every meeting I was at that this was a concern. So the question again is, is why are we doing, why would we do this for another year? Because this is what the can looks like when it's being kicked down the road. We incrementally say, well, we're going to go with this for one more year. And then we get to the next year, and then we go with it for one more year. We've already been doing it for 30 years, we've been kicking this can down the road, year after year after year after year, three trips to the consolidation meat grinder, and we're still making, we're still talking about that subject. And the problem is, is that until you stop kicking the can, you will continue watching it recede down the road, and I'm afraid that we have reached that point now. You know, the reason why this is not, this is not an issue for Booth, is because there's only, there's only one class with fewer than 10 people in it. You couldn't even combine two classes at Washington Primary if you wanted to, because you'd turn them all up to the 29, 28, 30 level, which would be a level above what we're willing to do. So, you know, that's a school that doesn't even have any prospect for this. Booth only has one oddball outlying year in the middle. Burnham's got a trend, and the trend is, it's got four years with single digits, one of them a three, one of them a six. I mean, the reason this is being considered is not because we don't want parity, or we don't want, it's because the superintendent has said it's not responsible to educate six people in a class. And what are we going to do when we've got three? So I think we're at the point now, if it's not responsible for six, and you've got one class of three and one class of six, you need two combined classes there, or you're being irresponsible. And I get back to the issue with the children. If the problem is, is that it's going to take another year in a cynical way to get the parents to realize that this is a mess and they need to face it, why would you want to wait a year? Why would you want to take, if it's, as the superintendent has said, she'll make anything work, but this is not what she wants to make work. She doesn't think this is educationally responsible. And if that's the case, why are we waiting another year? Why would you want to condemn the kids in that class to a year of an education that may not quite be what it should be, because it will make everyone feel good? And I know that people's emotions are raw, and I know that they speak from the heart, and I know that they care about their kids, I know that. But we've got educational professionals up here telling us that this is a disadvantageous situation for them. And if that's the case, if that's the advice that's in front of me, I, for one, can't vote for someone for something. I can't take a position that's going to put the kids at a disadvantage to salvage some people, namely, their parents' feelings. And that's where I am on this. It's not because I don't respect the parents' feelings and don't feel that they're heartfelt, it's because our duty is to the children, and if it's irresponsible to put six of them in that classroom, I can't vote to put six of them in the classroom. Now, the other, last point I want to address is Anthony's last point about the money. I don't think it makes any sense, Anthony. I think everything you say about money makes sense to me, and I agree with it, but this one, I don't. And I'll tell you why I don't. If we are increasing the expenditure in order to do something that's educationally irresponsible, it would be doubly educationally irresponsible to pull money we've already determined we need to spend out of the budget, just to make us feel good about having an equal opportunity. Look, it sends us the wrong, it doesn't teach us what you think it teaches, it teaches us the opposite. It teaches us that we can make decisions without having any priority on them, because we end up in the same place. So we don't need to, if we're going to spend more money to have a bad outcome, we don't have to worry about spending more money by taking some out. No, we need to worry about it. We're buying a bad outcome, and it's costing us more. And believe me, as someone who's probably made that decision in a restaurant many times, it doesn't matter, because that's one meal. This matters. This is these kids. And so that's, you know, where I'm coming from on it.
Oh, I always let people speak.
All right. I'm sorry, I'm going to take over. Michelle, thank you for your presentation to date. We have a motion on the table, it's 10 minutes to 12. Is there anything else on the motion?
Oh, my God.
Alan.
I just want to thank people for the support and to point out that the can-kicking is, I think, circumstantial. It is to not only deal with extenuating circumstances, but really to be rock-solid about the educational benefits of this decision. This really is a long-range plan, whether it is for Booth and Burnham, whether it's just for Burnham, whether it's for the whole school system, as everyone says, it's most likely just for Burnham at the moment, but is a, it's a long-range plan. And the Long Range Planning Committee exists to help the administration, to work with the administration, and really bring the community in. And this is the kind of thing, a lot of the things that are said about expanding multi-age, is that the community has to buy in. And I think the year is for us to really, for us all to learn about it, for us to educate our community about it, and to obviously, train the teachers about, in it, and to pave the way for something that we really couldn't do, because we were all, at least I, as the chairman of the Long Range Planning Committee, was warned again and again, that to embark on something that involves another aspect of change while we were embarking on the aspect of change, which is getting the community behind the Ag-STEM referendum, was dangerous. So the surprise is not so much that this wasn't an inevitable discussion, the surprise that this is happening this year, I think, is what happened, and I think that the town leaders were admonished to keep quiet about it because of the, because of other things that were going on. So I really do appreciate the fact that this is something that is not only going to, you know, what I'm hoping for is that something will buy us time to, as Anthony said, get behind a solution for this during the next year, but also not add more unknowns to our next year as we try to gain support, and as I said, perhaps begin the possibility of adding to our student body, as opposed to just watching it disappear.
Anyone else? All right, there's a motion, the motion is to add back the full-time second and third grade classes at the Burnham School. Was that the motion, Alan?
It's really.
Well, first, Anthony, are you serious, or do I need to make an amendment? Are you serious about that? Do you want to try to?
A .5 teacher, $36,000.
All right, well, the motion is to add a, is that right, to add a .5 teacher?
To add a .5 teacher.
For $36,000.
$36,000 for the math intervention.
I don't know, we can come back to it.
No, no.
We can make a second motion.
To have a full-time second and third grade. Leave the math intervention out of it, that's totally different.
But 36 was to?
The math intervention's already in my budget.
Can I make a motion?
I can, but $35,000 to cover salary for a first-class teacher, because he's only two, second and third grade.
Yeah, because that is the part that you're taking some of the third grade for.
I guess, I guess, you can look at it either way, I guess.
Is that okay?
Well, let's just make sure, if the intention is to maintain teachers in the second and third grade, and to have an interventionist.
Well, the way to do that under this budget, the way to do that is to add the $35,000 for the math interventionist, that's why I phrase it that way.
No, but that's not.
But that's not true, because in my presentation, I've taken the one teacher, let's just say it's the third-grade teacher, just for, I've taken the third-grade teacher and I've reallocated it to half-third grade, half-interventionist. So that's already currently in this budget. So what you're asking to do is to add a half-third-grade teacher, a half of a teacher to make the second and the third grade whole.
All right.
So that's really what you're doing.
The outcome is the same.
And Bob is, do you agree with that number, Bob, $35,000?
It's 36, 35 is far.
Well, it's 36.
Is the way I, 35.
Well, 4,000.
All right, that's.
So would you prefer that the motion says, add $36,000, $35,000 to the budget in order to provide a full-time second and third grade, full-time third grade?
That's.
It's the same thing, but it doesn't get into the details of math.
All right, and that's still your second, Rebecca?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye. Actually, raise your hand. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Raise your hand. Any abstain? I'm sorry, did you get that? Any abstain? All right, what's the count? All right, the motion passes. It's 12 o'clock.
Motion or adjourned?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we're not done with the budget discussion, and we're back at it next week. Thank you.